Okay, calling this meeting to order. Um, we have no Schulte, but I think he'll probably be here shortly. Um, okay. No Kim, but I don't think you need to really note that. Maybe you should. Open forum?
No.
No Kim. Forum, nobody's here. Close the open forum.
Talk slower tonight because Mike's keeping notes.
Taking notes.
We got the technology.
Oh, yeah. This is awesome. Um, all right, consent agenda, typical three things, nothing new. Unless you want to talk about any of this stuff, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with one addition that we add the Highway 61 project at some point.
To this, to this agenda meeting?
To this agenda, yes. Could be after G.
I make that. G is small cell wireless aesthetic standards, anyway.
I thought you meant that, G.
Yeah.
Uh, I'll second that.
Okay, motion and a second, that's the agenda as amended, and then the approval of the meeting minutes and the payment bills. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. All right, appointments to boards and commissions, so you may have noticed, there he is, I knew he'd be right here. Um, you may have noticed that we have-
You're appointing everything, good.
Yeah, yeah.
Another five minutes, we were just gonna appoint you to all the different boards. So, your timing is good.
I got a knife, be careful.
Um, so we have a bunch of openings on different, uh, different boards and commissions that the city has represented, representatives on. Three of them are incumbents that are seeking their second three-year term, or whatever the, the terms are, a six-year term for the EDA. Bev Green is on that, the library board, Judy Johnson, park board, Jennifer Stoltz. We do not have someone yet for the planning commission. I did send out some messages to encourage people who have shown interest in the past to apply. Haven't heard back, but I feel like we probably will be able to snag somebody for that. So unless people would like to discuss, we have a slate of candidates here, we could approve them one by one. That is how we like to do it.
Would you like to do it one way or one, or we can do it as a slate?
Do whatever you want.
I'd make a motion to approve all, um, of the citizen appointments for the boards as listed.
We had to do them all at once.
We just found an efficiency.
Efficiency.
I'll second that.
Okay, as long as we, yeah, okay, so there's a motion and a second, any discussion?
Chris, can we approve them all at one time?
You can approve them all at one time.
There you go.
Hot diggity darn, that's why we have you on, Chris. Um, okay, nice chuckle. Uh, any further discussion?
Thank you.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Okay, thank you to everyone who serves on our boards and commissions, we really appreciate you.
Yes, thank you.
So then we move on to the next logistical thing for us, which is council appointments. So, in your packet, you have the list of all of the council appointments as they exist right now, except for the fact that, um, the public utilities board is me, Anton-
There's a few problems with this list. This is the last people that were appointed some of these, so-
Not here.
The Tracy Benson on the North Shore Management Board, which is meeting tonight, by the way, and we haven't had a representative on this board for a while, so.
Yep, and then we've got, you know, a representative for the park board we need to identify, uh, we have a member of the public utilities board, which basically just meets to discuss, um, uh, problems, right?
It has met twice in 17 years that I've been here, so-
It's, it's a-
It's a review board that if there's a, a customer of the public utilities commission that has a, an issue that they want to have some, somebody review a decision, that the public utilities board would then convene and look at that.
So, basically what we're looking for is North Shore Management Board, Park Board.
ARDC board?
ARDC board. Oh, because you're not doing that?
I, I have gone, I think, to two.
Are they down in Duluth?
They're all over the place, and I always feel like I find out about them like the week that they're happening. I'm sure that they communicate better, but, so, I, I just haven't gone.
Well, maybe we should start by saying, Craig, which ones do you want to be on?
Park board.
All right, that's probably the big one, really.
Yeah. That's fine.
That's the first Tuesday of the month?
Yeah.
At 4:45 at the park office.
Their, their time moves around sometimes, though, so-
First Tuesday.
Yep.
Person can probably offer an opinion about that.
Can you do that?
Park building.
Uh, so we need to, we should probably appoint somebody to the public utilities board, so we have three people on that. Does anybody want to sit on that? It's met twice in the last 17 years. God damn, that's the guy. Um, and then, uh, North Shore Management Board and ARDC, those are, I mean, those are harder ones to get to because they meet all over the place, um, or down in Duluth.
North Shore Management Board doesn't go as far as Duluth, but they do up and down the shore. ARDC's a little bit.
Yeah.
But they meet less often, too. I don't think they meet very often, do they?
That's, you're asking the wrong guy.
Got it. I've gone to zero meetings, so.
I, I mean, I can try and get my, I mean, I, I can try and improve that, I guess.
There's, there has, there was a citizen who, who asked me, a citizen from up the shore a little ways, who asked me if I would nominate him to be on the ARDC board. That's not the position that we have access to, it's a citizen position, um, but we do have representation on the ARDC board, like, from somebody from this area. It would be nice if we could go to-
Ginny Storey goes for the county, and she's with-
Isn't, isn't the board made up of all elected officials, and isn't there a, a technical advisory committee that's, uh?
That's the North Shore Management Board that does that.
Okay, so, but, but isn't the ARDC board made up of all elected officials, too?
No, and they don't have the technical panel.
For North Shore Management, do you know how often they meet?
I think quarterly.
And do we know roughly a time?
Hmm, it's usually evenings, I know that.
Okay. I can give it a whirl, we'll see how it combines, I don't know.
Yeah, I got you.
But, it's hard when you're a working person.
Yeah, well, there could be lots that you could do without having to attend as well, so.
So I have a question about the safety committee, too, because we, you know, Anton's on the safety committee. Um, is that something, it says committee, but it's one person, is that, is that something that, um?
No, it's one counselor.
On the safety committee?
Yeah.
Gotcha. And then his representatives from-
You mean yourself?
Representatives from the rest of the workers and-
It's a, it's a staff that has representatives of, um-
Arts and streets.
Management level and, and below management level, and then it's staffed by, Kim's kind of the coordinator, and then we also hire MNUA to be our safety consultants, and they send us a, a safety expert that is the resource for that committee.
Um, on the liaisons, on the, on the lower section of that, um, I've been the rep for CCLAP for a long time, the meetings happen at terrible times when I can't make them. So if anybody else, I'm fine keeping my name on the list, and I will attend when I can, but it's hard for me to make those meetings. So, just, um, it's fine, nobody says anything, I'll-
I don't think anybody's looking at you or talking.
Well, sorry, if it's terrible times for you, it's gonna be worse for me, so.
Yeah, that's fine. And can you put an H on it? I guess it isn't there. J. Harold Smith.
I like that one.
So is that, does that sound good? Everybody feel like that's a slate of?
Do you need one more for the public utilities board then, yet, or?
Uh-
Jay, Anton, Craig.
Yep.
Oh, Craig did.
Yeah, that's fine.
Now, now that you're on it, we're gonna meet the Catholic-
What does that mean?
It meets whenever there's an-
Twice in 17 years.
Oh, when you have a-
Rarely.
When I get a notice to meet.
Yeah.
We'll schedule a meeting.
In the next four years, you might not get one, or you could get ten.
Does anyone have any other changes that they would like to see with their responsibilities as they have been, been assigned? Okay, that sound good? So, um, these appointments stand, we don't, do we need a motion to do that? Okay, so, I would entertain a motion to, uh, to appoint as, as discussed.
So moved.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, there you go, you got it, Schulte's with a second. Um, any further discussion? Well, I will say as part of discussion, thank you to all of you who go to these meetings, and, you know, that's part of how the city government works, works well. So I appreciate that. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. All right, now really, the one that I know you're all gonna fight over.
Arm wrestling contest?
Arm wrestling contest for who wants to be the acting mayor.
I'm out.
So this is, oh, no.
If we did labor, it's like, I'd do better.
I was, I was gonna nominate Anton. Wait, so this is basically who's gonna be, who's gonna be the mayor, or who's gonna act, you know, perform the duties of the mayor when I'm not here, which I think in the past four years has been about two meetings a year. So.
Yep.
So, anybody? Tim has been in for the last, god knows how long.
Fifteen years.
So unless somebody else is interested in running a meeting, we can just, uh-
Come on, Anton.
It's too good an incentive to stick around, see, turn it over to me and never know what that might happen.
All right, yeah, gotta keep my eye on you. Or somebody else. It's, I mean, somebody's gotta make a motion for something, so, somebody can nominate somebody. We'll go from there.
I wanted to nominate Anton, not that I dislike him, I just thought somebody else should get to have their turn, but if Anton's-
I don't care.
Oh.
All right, then I'll nom, I'll nominate Anton.
Hey!
I'll back you up if you need some help.
You get to be the-
Second and the third?
Lieutenant Deputy Mayor.
Vice vice?
Vice vice.
Well, yeah, and currently it's skip, vice skip, and-
So who seconded that?
Craig.
Who seconded that? Okay, so the motion and a second for Anton as the acting mayor. All, any discussion? Because this'll be great, Anton.
Takes a burden off of me.
Yeah.
How are you at signing checks?
Sleep better at work, actually. That's the, that's the, that's the big thing.
Your kids will be so proud.
Kim will call you up and say, where are you, we need you, we need you right now.
Is the sash adjustable?
What?
Is the mayoral sash adjustable?
Do you think it's not gonna fit you?
Yeah, you're smaller than I am.
It's not a crown?
Well, tell you, you can leave town, though, you can make proclamations.
Oh, my god, I'm never leaving town. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries, congratulations.
Thanks.
Uh, so the next thing that we have on the-
That's gotta be burden.
On our logistical list for today is to designate the official newspaper. This is where we, um, we post advertisements, this is where we have all of our official communications with the community. Before the meeting, we spoke a touch about what an official newspaper has to be, whether we need one, we don't really need one, but there's still a lot of people in our community who do use a newspaper to get information.
I would make a motion to approve the Cook County News Herald as our legal newspaper of choice.
Okay, legal newspaper of choice.
Second.
I think he needs official newspaper. Motion and a second. Any discussion?
So you said that we don't have to designate one?
We don't have to, but-
We do have options to publish ourselves.
I guess I'm just a little interested, um, I've been frustrated by some of the things that I'm opinionated. Readings is what I feel, more story than fact stuff, so, um, I was just a little curious to hear about what our options might be, but-
Well, it's been a while since I've prepared that report for the council, but I'd be happy to do that if you'd like me to.
Well, I think, I think that there's a certain expectation of, that there is, that within the newspaper, that if there are public notices and that, that that's where people look for them, rather than looking on a website or looking in other locations, and that's not to say that we couldn't do it in those other locations, too, but, but I think that there's, uh, people that rely on seeing that stuff in the paper, that, to abandon that, I think is, you know, we, we should probably prepare for that, uh, rather than just not accept it. That's my thought, so.
We wouldn't be doing anything in addition if you decided not to use the newspaper. We already publish our own stuff on our website right now, and I think that we would probably agree that there's no one method that reaches most people, so we try to use as many as we can.
Yeah, and whatever, whatever the council decides, I guess I, I guess I want to make them aware that I'm a bit frustrated with, with some of the writings and, and some of the things that occur there, so, um, I guess that's kind of my point, to tell them, that I, I would hope that maybe some more facts would be related, not quite so much story or so much coloring to a story, maybe, or coloring to an article, so, I just want that on record.
Yep.
I agree.
All right, any further discussion on that? Motion and a second to adopt the Cook County News Herald for official newspaper. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stay? Carries. All right.
If, uh-
Uh, Tim made the second.
I'm assuming you voted aye.
I voted aye.
Yeah.
So the next, the next thing we've got is we have the official city depository, so we need to identify these each year, so that it is identified where we, where we, where we store city funds, and when, and where they're, they're deposited.
I would make a motion to approve the following list of depositories of city funds for 2019.
Okay, motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Just for the discussion portion, those depositories are the Grand Marais State Bank, North Shore Federal Credit Union Security State Bank, um, the LMC, which is the forum fund, and then RBC, which is the, um, Royal Bank of Canada?
I believe so.
I believe that's what that stands for?
Send our money to Canada now.
We just send it wherever we get these rates.
Yeah. So, any further discussion on that? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. All right, more logistics. So the next thing that we have is the mileage rates for 2019, so, the IRS standard mileage suggestion, or, you know, rate for, um, for 2019 is 58 cents per mile for business, business driving, uh, so that is the one that we use most of the time for, for reimbursement. So we need to set that, that's the recommendation, we can set it at whatever we want, from what I understand, but, um, but going with the IRS rates makes filing taxes a lot easier and, and recording things a lot easier.
I motion that we follow the federal tax rate.
Okay, there's a motion for 58 cents a mile. Any, uh, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Great. So, um, the next thing on the agenda, I'm gonna turn over to Mike, uh, because it sounds like the FCC is changing some rules that will impact us.
So we sent a bunch of material separate from the agenda for you to look at, just to get kind of a feel for what it is that's happening here. The FCC made some rulings that are gonna take effect, and, um, the next week, I believe, where if we do not have in place aesthetic standards for small cell wireless facilities, which is basically just a utility pole-sized installation, then a company could potentially come in and request the use of our right-of-ways, and we would have limited options to control them based on aesthetics. So the, Chris and his firm have worked on this issue and put together a, um, a model policy for us to use and adopt if we're interested. Uh, I don't think that we're looking at a imminent risk situation where someone's gonna show up here in the next three weeks and try to install small cell wireless, where we don't have other options to deal with that, that aesthetics is the only consideration, but it's, it's possible, so, you know, this is fair warning from Chris and an option for moving forward on this. If you want to adopt this model, we, we can do that, um, if you want to spend a little time talking about it and thinking about it, or you want to set up some other process to evaluate it, we can do that, so, just brought to my attention, I'm bringing it to yours, looking for some direction.
So this, so I just pulled up the email that has the, um, the design guidelines for, you know, template that, that Chris sent out. So this is a, an aesthetic design guideline, so what we're trying to stop is we're trying to stop these, you know, cell carrier company from coming in and just putting an antenna on the side of, like, like one of those cell, cell antennas on any of the poles, like, basically, where the poles in the city.
The, the phenomenon that I think this is addressing is really more, not what you see on the radio tower, but actually-
Like nodes?
Yeah, that, that size, but really like utility pole size, um, just anywhere in, on the streets and right-of-ways, and, and, you know, that might not look out of place in a lot of our, uh, right-of-ways, where we do have just wooden utility poles and, and other, you know, wired facilities, whereas when you, if you came downtown and did something like that, we're trying for something a little more aesthetically pleasing here, and we might want to have some standards that we'd ask people to meet if they're gonna put something like that in the right-of-way here.
And so, can, can, so if they come and ask us to put something in the right-of-way, and I apologize that I didn't get a chance to look through this all thoroughly, to completely understand it, but can we just tell them no? Is, is that the change of the FCC, like with the SEC, that, that we can't just tell them no?
Well, I'm not gonna answer that directly, so apologize for that right now, but the ability for us to say no based merely on aesthetics is being taken away without us having a policy that addresses this aesthetic consideration. We didn't have one before, so, uh, we could have, you know, in response to a request, made a counter that said we needed to look like this, without a policy, and now we really don't have the ability to do that, like, next week, anyway, we really don't have the ability to do that. If we want to have these types of facilities comply with any sort of aesthetic that we're going for, then we need to use a policy that we can provide to people that's readily available, that meets some of the standards, and that this model that Chris has put together meets those standards and is kind of designed for other cities that have that similar, uh, you know, whether it be down, cool downtown touristy sort of thing, where we might actually be concerned about aesthetic.
Well, considering all the work that we've put into the Highway 61, like the, the look and whatnot of, of the Highway 61 project, it seems like it would be silly for us not to put, you know, not to adopt some sort of design guidelines on this. This, well, from what I see, this is a template, this is not finished product, so basically we just need to-
No, it's definitely not a finished product, although, I mean, you could just take the yellow stuff and put in Grand Marais, and with minor changes, it's a finished product, or if you'd prefer to go through a little more involved process of review, the, the hard deadline on creating this is in April.
But if we get, if we can, if, but that's, if somebody, after the 14th happens in January, somebody applies for a permit on one of these-
Yeah.
And we don't have anything in place, then, so, what, what we could pass this, right? We could pass the version of this as it is right now, but then take until the 30th, is the way I understand that, of April, to revise, to make it fit ours versus it just being a template?
Yes.
Right?
Yep.
Okay. Well, that seems like-
Well, this is-
-the thing to do, maybe? If I'll make a motion, uh, to, boy, how do you word that?
To adopt the model-
To adopt the aesthetics policy?
For, well, small wireless facility design guidelines.
For small wirel, you should have been the acting mayor for small wireless.
He was-
Sorry, hang on.
An hour ago.
It was an hour ago.
I think we got it. Small wireless facility design guidelines.
And then, so then, would that be, we can all look at that more in detail and find things that we find that we want to, we want to make changes, or do we have to send that to Chris then to have him look at the recommendations?
Let's deal with the rest of the motion-making bit.
Yeah, so there's still a motion, there's not a second for this.
I'll-
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second, so now's the time for discussion, so, so, adopting a guideline like this, this is not ordinance level, so, so do we have to do, do we have to do two hearings on this?
This is a policy.
This is a policy, that's what I thought, so we can just adopt this and we can change it as necessary.
You can. I, if, what, uh, I would recommend that you decide which group you want to have go through the review process, if you want it to be you, then take a little more time with it.
I think it could be us, you know, and frankly, I'm not sure I really understand the, uh, the complexities, or if there are any complexities to this, it seems like it's pretty straightforward, but, you know, I don't think we have any of them out there right now, do we, that we-
No.
Have any permanent requests for, so.
We've had communications, there were a few companies that were trying to build out networks, um, small cell wireless networks, and that kind of blanketed lots and lots of small towns with proposals, um, none of which were, rose to the level of official requests in my mind, so.
Does this go back to some of those early boreal, uh, you know, transmissions?
This is really, you know, a recent phenomenon.
This is like-
Last three to five years, and, and I haven't heard anything from a company in, in a year or two about it, but that doesn't mean, you know, this, if this is the direction that the, that the industry's going, then we should expect that this is gonna start happening again.
I think it would be reasonable to have, have some, something come back to us to better understand how this might impact us, uh, in a, in a kind of significant way, because I really don't understand how this, you know, is significant.
I can, I understand a little bit about why they're putting up these little nodes around, and these small wireless facility things around, and that's that, that they're gonna be making this jump from, from, from 4G LTE to 5G, and the 5G jump is gonna be literally like broadband, broadband at download speeds, um, for, for, for your cellular device, and they just can't handle all that with the big towers.
And then, and it's like, from what I understand, actually, my project manager built these out all over, like, the Bay Area in California, so he'd probably be a good person to talk to about that, but like, the, it's, that, it, it covers a certain amount of blocks, basically, and obviously, San Francisco, there's a lot more people, and a lot more people using, you know, 5G data than is here, but, uh, but they're-
Yeah, it's hard to say whether that's actually technologically required to serve a community of this size.
Right, like, the tower might be just fine.
I think it, it was more of a, um, upstart company trying to, you know, get into the business, where, you know, they don't have to invest in a tower, they can just put a couple of poles on the ground, and, and it's a lot easier, uh, and, and, again, I don't know how realistic it is to think that that is gonna happen up here, but we just know that the regulations, the underlie our decision-making authority have changed, and that if you want to still have this ability, this is the action you need to take.
So on that regard, or in that regard, you made a motion to adopt these guidelines, making the necessary changes so that it identifies Grand Marais instead of City of St. Charles, or whatever city this is. I have a question for Chris about this, because this came from you, I'm assuming.
It did, yep.
Okay, so, this is written specifically to address small, small wireless facilities. Is there, is there anything else that this could limit, um, like, based on how it's, how it's written, that we're not thinking of? Um, like, you know, are we gonna, does this policy, is it gonna be, is it gonna be impactful for other, other things that we do in our right-of-way or not? I'm, I'm just curious.
This is written directly at small cell wireless facilities, which are basically telecom antennas, which you've already talked about, small telecom antennas that are connected to light poles or power poles, pretty much, in the right-of-way. And, um, as you said, they're gonna be needed for 5G, and, and folks are gonna, these telecom companies are gonna need a lot more of these things in order to have a 5G network, but in terms of telecom generally, like, you know, the 150-foot telecom tower and those kinds of things, those are typically dealt with in a zoning ordinance, right-of-way and other uses of right-of-way are usually dealt with in a right-of-way ordinance, and then And then with small wireless facilities, uh, given that you're a utility and you have uh power and light poles. Um typically, a third component is to have a co-location agreement, which is an agreement between the telecom company. Uh and the utility uh in order to put um these antennas on the poles. Uh and then part and parcel to that then would be the application of these guidelines. To each of those antennas that are proposed, uh, so that those antennas meet certain aesthetic requirements. I mean, I think you you've all pretty well covered, um, kind of the reasons why you need to do this. I mean, essentially, adopting this policy is really a placeholder where you are sort of. Preserving your rights to be able to do this, uh, because if you don't put something in place before April fifteenth. You lose the right to do it and I most, I haven't heard of a city yet that I provided this to that didn't. Um, adopt it because of that very reason. Now, that being said, this document is probably gonna change between now and April fifteenth, twenty nineteen. Because as I understand it, the League of Cities, uh, and they seem to be have been a little bit late to the dance. Um, is working on a model that they're gonna try to provide to all cities, so. Once we get that, we may wanna modify this to some degree. The other thing that that Grand Marais may wanna look at is. Uh, you know, it might be time for the city to consider adopting a right of way ordinance. That deals with small cell wireless facilities and the other recommendation that we had is that. You know, if you haven't looked at your zoning ordinance related to telecom in the last twenty or twenty-five years. Um, now might be a good time to do that, too.
We should take a note on that.
Put that on the list, right?
Yeah, we'll put that on the list. Um, so I have, so I have a couple of questions about that. Um, so number one. This is just simple, and I think that, you know, maybe this conversation with the League of Minnesota Cities will will solve this, but, you know. Perhaps you just know that this is know the answer to this question. Is the language used in this in this template talking about small wireless facilities and such? Is that the language that will be effective at addressing the situation? Because I know that a lot of times nomenclature changes really quickly in technology. Is this something that you feel pretty comfortable is not going to, it's gonna be well understood and it's gonna be enforceable?
Yes, and and the reason for that is that the terminology we're using is the terminology that is being used by the FCC. And the terminology that was used by the state of Minnesota when the state of Minnesota passed its. Legislation on this subject in twenty seventeen, the problem is that the FCC has now changed. Um, the playing field such that the state's statute is now in conflict in some cases with the FCC order. On things such as fees and and those types of issues. And so there are pieces of this that are going to be, you know, the the ball is still moving on this to some degree. And I suspect there'll be actions to legislature, but in terms of this particular document and the terminology that's being used in it. Um, I I have every expectation that that terminology is gonna continue to be used.
Okay, and so so that's good, I mean, that's good to know, and you'll keep us up to date on on changes and and modifications to what. The expectations are for this, I'm assuming.
Yes.
If we pass this, and um the other question that I have is, can we just add to this policy of co-location requirements? So people don't have to put up new or people can't put up new top new poles?
You you, that's why I said you probably need to think seriously about a right of way ordinance. Uh, because the right of way ordinance, we need some kind of ordinance in place at this point, I think, to. Enforce a co-location agreement because our state statute. Has specific requirements related to that. So it now again would be the time and the league, the league developed in twenty seventeen, the league developed a model. Right of way ordinance that dealt with this, that model right of way ordinance is now going to need to be amended to some degree to reflect what's in the FCC order. And supposedly, the league is working on that, too. So, you know, at some point here, you know, my. My recommendation is that, you know, we wait a month and a half or so and we see if the league has put out anything at that point. And then we think about what modifications or what we need to do then, and obviously, I'll be in touch with Mike about all of that.
Okay.
Great.
Does that answer everybody's questions? So we still have a motion and a second in further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of adopting the uh, gosh, what does it say, it says. Small cell wireless aesthetic standard, design standard, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, carries. Great, thank you for that discussion.
You're welcome.
Okay, so this is where we're adding in discussion about highway sixty one, the highway sixty one project, so. Um, I'm curious as to what exactly about it you want to discuss, Tim?
Well, I mean. After after Kelly and Anton had left the meeting, we were talking about the uh, the next step. Uh, that Mindot is gonna be taking and that's to be putting together formal bid documents. And at our last meeting, we talked about the the budget for those. We'll call them amenities, uh, we still had some questions about that, and I think what was presented today was. It was CJ's, uh, you know, rendition of how those amenities play out based on those numbers that we have received. Now that we, what I understand is that there was some, there'd be some kind of adjustment to those numbers based on some refinements. But overall, those numbers that we saw are basically the numbers that we're probably gonna end up. Having to deal with in terms of if they'll go with the tap funds, city resources that might be in addition to the tap funds. And how that plays out into into the actual design. I think we've come a long ways, we've addressed the issues that the. That were identified early on in the process and that was, you know, the issues of safety, the issues of improvement of that highway corridor. Both from a traffic standpoint and from an aesthetic and pedestrian standpoint. You know, I think it's time for us to make a decision, I I would support. The the design as it was presented.
Is that where we're at? I mean, is that is that kind of the next step that we need to do is we, I mean, we we've given, we've given them a lot of. A lot of stuff to work with, um, a lot of iterations of of the design. Are we at a point where we where we? A, feel comfortable and B, are, you know, logistically have to be approving, um, approving this design?
Well, you you can deal with A, and for B, uh, it certainly would be appropriate to approve it now. If there's some reason you don't want to, then it would certainly be appropriate to talk about that now. The the schedule that you heard from LHB is that they're gonna be providing this design by the end of January to Mindot. And when they do that, it's a thousand-page document, so. You know, giving them some changes to make on the twenty-eighth is not gonna really serve their needs and. This, you know, has been a five-year process to get to now, so there's really most of this design that doesn't need that type of scrutiny, it's been going over and over and over. So I think we're at the point we're at now is you've had a chance to look at the a a good budget, you've had a chance to. Go back and review the design, look at what it what it is and where it is and and what it looks like and who was involved in it and see their comfort level with it. So now it's a question of what's your comfort level with it?
So we should probably just open up a discussion on that and see where, see where we're at, see what our comfort level with it is. And then um, then we can move forward as necessary. So, Tim definitely just gave his perspective on it. I can give mine, I I think that. Uh, when I started into this process, we were talking about a very different project than we are talking about right now. And um, having gone to um countless meetings with with hundreds of different people who. Uh, have a stake in this in this project, either because they're a user or they're a landowner or all of these other things. I've had an opportunity to hear people's questions and to voice the questions that other people have told to me. And I think that the responses to those concerns and those questions are reflected in the plan. And so without, you know, this this could go through a forever iteration process of, you know, fine tuning and everything like that. And I think that where we're at right now with the with the design um is, I think that we're we're as close as we're gonna get. To having the the project ready to, ready to go and reflecting what the community asked us to do. So so that's my take on it, we could keep going and keep futzing with little details and things like that, but I don't think that we would make any substantive changes. I think that we're ninety-nine percent there and ninety-five percent there if you wanna get down to logistical numbers. So, anyone else have anything, any thoughts, anything to say?
I don't know that I'm totally comfortable with it yet, and um, obviously, I've come to the dance pretty late, um, and I get that. But there's some elements in it still that I look at. And it's pretty, I think today I described it as it's a really nice evening gown. It seems like we've decided we have to have a really sparkling evening gown to make it more expensive, is kind of how I felt in looking at some things. I understand that there's gonna be different viewpoints from mine, and that's why we're all here, because in order to get the best thing, you wanna have everybody's input. I know Craig said he talked to most business owners today, I don't know how many of them over the years. And I guess in a way it's on them have come and expressed their concerns, their thoughts, what they want, what they don't want, what's happening. I know a lot of people say, you know what, I'm not gonna bother because no matter what I say, nobody listens to me. And I think all of us can say that, we've gone through that in life at some point with anything. But there were some things today that I, a couple of examples that I looked at and went, is this necessary? Are we spending money here, is it well spent in the best opportunity that we have? And I guess I'll give my example of Third Avenue West, right in front of the dentist's office. Third Avenue East, yep, sorry, in front of the dentist's office where we have kind of that dead end. And then there's the concrete wall and a lot of trees. And somebody said, well, maybe people will use that end of town more and and there's, there can be arguments, it it may not be. Um, just my way of thinking, but. Where some of the benches are and where they're located and that spot I think of, are they really gonna be highly used? That we're putting the money in those places? And I know they're paid by grant, I know some of it's city funds that we have put away different things. But bottom line is it still all comes out of taxpayer dollar, and I hear that a lot from people, grants are not free money. There are dollars going in, it's just somebody else deciding where they go. So there's some things still that, you know, I had the question about a hundred and five trees. You know, CJ explained thirty to forty, we'll go on that hillside, kind of above the campground to replenish. What they're taking out of there, what has to move, but that still leaves a lot of trees. In less than a mile and a half now. That I think, wow, that's a lot more than what we have right now, and maybe I'm off, but it seems like a lot more to me. Um, I again, I hate to do this, I think we still need to address then an issue that we have with the growing number of rodents living in the harbor. So just some of the things that, you know, I don't mean to be the negative Nellie or the devil's advocate. But I think that as people come and talk to me and bring up things, it's the job to bring it here and talk about it, and I think we have to consider it. I know we talked about having different areas of public works of art. If we don't have it deemed what we're gonna use, are we gonna build something and pay for something that might not get used? For five years, for ten years, maybe it's used in a year, maybe it's not ever used that nobody says, hey, I wanna donate or I'm gonna give this to the city. Are they just gonna be concrete spots for people to go and sit, because then we've already spent money on really nice benches? I do like um, the amenities they've chosen. I think that it looks really nice, and I think that it very much fits the area. So I'm happy to see that, but I just, I have some concerns where money is going and what we're doing and what the real overall. Use of things will be, I know it, again, it's that pretty evening gown, but do we have to have all the sparkles to it? Just kind of my thought.
I appreciate you saying that.
You know, and I know we've talked about safety in the corridor, but the speed limit's not changing, is it?
I don't think it's going down to twenty, you're saying like going down to twenty-five or something?
Anything, it's gonna remain at thirty, right?
Well, I've talked with, every time that I've seen Michael Cullen back from from Mindot, I've I've asked him about. The possibility of changing the speed limit from forty to thirty at the top, or from thirty to.
Forty to thirty.
I was right the first time.
They don't do less than thirty.
At the top of, um, at the top of the hill instead of down in town, and he. He, every time I ask him, he says, oh, something we could do, something we could work on, something we could, you know, something we could do. And I don't know what it all takes on their side of it, but as far as I'm concerned, that's just change of sign. So so I mean, that's something we could do to address speeds coming in.
And they have, they have talked about changing the speed on the east end of town from forty to thirty further out, but they haven't really said where that transition is gonna take place.
No, it's in the plans, though, we looked at it tonight, and it was pretty close to where it is now, it's.
It's the same, yeah.
Hasn't moved much, you know, in front of IGA.
So.
Somewhere out there.
So regardless of all the changes that are occurring to make it safer, which I'm not saying it is or isn't. The intention is correct, the speed limit doesn't change, so whether I wanna take a corner, whether I wanna pay attention to a bump out or not. You know, and people say, well, people just have to slow down, well, that means that everybody has to think the way that I think. And I know that doesn't happen, so people are gonna drive thirty if the speed limit's thirty. Kids, adults are gonna drive, Canadians are gonna drive whatever speed they, people are gonna do what they wanna do.
Well, it's not that simple, though, there's actually a lot of science and data that says that's not true. And that the design actually does affect people's behavior, not everybody's.
All I was gonna say to that was that, you know, like at Cascade, like you go through Cascade right now and. You know, I mean, forty, it's supposed to be forty, right? This time of year, if you go through there forty-five miles an hour, whatever, it doesn't feel like anything, because it's just two empty turnoffs. But you know that as soon as spring and summer get here, forty miles an hour seems way too fast to go through there, because there's all these tailgates right along the fog line. You know, I mean, so and you have that natural tendency, at least if you go through there, to like be like, whoa, man, this is like, I gotta slow down, because there's people and there's dogs.
Well, again, that would be you and I that are more reasonable, and some people don't.
Some people don't, but most people do.
But again, it's that sense of like that there is like activity, and I think that that I, I mean, the trees, I mean, the trees, that has a huge part of that feeling of.
You're in a neighborhood.
Being closed in.
Of that, yeah, being closed in, that con contraction.
One of the early exercises that we did before this project even was a project was that we had a consultant that came in and. Had pictures of sections of highway sixty one in town where they stripped away the outside, so all you could see was the curbs and the lanes and the paint. And it was, guess the speed limit? And and it's just totally random what the actual speed limit is based on what you think it is. And what matters isn't what's on the sign, it matters what impression the road gives you, that's the speed that people drive. And and when Mindot looks at changing speed limits, what they do is a speed study, which means they go see how fast people are going. And then they set the speed limit at that, so it, the design is what creates the speed, not the signs, not Mindot, not anything else. And and the things that are incorporated in this design will make a big difference safety-wise. And including trees and other things where there are vertical elements that are trying to create that sense of enclosure. And when you look at the the few blocks of highway that have the kind of big trees growing on them now, they just, it does feel significantly different. Uh, when you think about some of the neighborhood streets where you get that enclosure, it does feel significantly different. And it will make a difference for most people, not everybody, obviously, there's people that are gonna be crazy and do things, but.
I I don't say that to like diminish what your feelings, I mean, I don't say that to say you're wrong, I mean, I agree with you, like it is. Right, thirty miles an hour, it still seems, it doesn't seem too fast, and those people are gonna, some people will still go fifty.
It's not all just my feelings, because this isn't about me coming here and representing myself. So at least if I'm coming and talking about things that either, one, I do think of and have questions on, or I need answers to, or people are asking me about, then it's out there. You know, and that's the hard part when people look at you and go, well, I can say what I want and I'm never heard anyway. I get it, like I said, I know we've all been there, so I I at least want it, if I bring it up and talk about it, it's on record here, then people know I'm bringing up that stuff. What happens, and you could all look at me and go. What happens, and you could all look at me and go, yep, we heard you Kelly, thanks, four to one, it's, it goes through or whatever, or five, nothing, five zero, it goes through, or maybe it gets down. But I just wanna talk about some of those things, cause again, where we're spending money in some areas that maybe we don't have to, we have a grant, you know, could we put it in other areas? Just a thought, but, and I'm, I'm not taking away from their design, so...
You remember that there's a lot of city money in this project. Yeah, there's a lot of grant money that we're leveraging, you know, really, really a lot. But it's not an insignificant amount that you're gonna be putting in as well. So, if there's things you're not comfortable with, or you don't think are worth it, then this is the time to say that. We can still take things out of this project if you don't think it's a good investment.
I mean, I, I...
Most of it is designed to try to respond to what the public told us they wanted out of this highway. But in the end, you know, it's the five of you that get to decide if that hit the mark or not, so...
Well, I think like with, with any project of this magnitude, there's, there's always parts of it that, you know, we could tweak and, and maybe change or make improvements to. But I look at the, the lifespan of this project, and we're talking a fifty, fifty-year project that, you know, when, when it's, when it's completed, for the most part, this is the way it's gonna look in fifty years too. And I've heard people talk about the inner break wall, you know, from almost the day, the day it was built, that it was put in the wrong location, it was done, you know, without consideration as to what the long-term impacts of that might be. And it's like, I don't want the Highway sixty-one project to be that next discussion about, you know, why twenty years down the line, we didn't do something different? You know, I think what we, what we have here is the opportunity to, to, to get a, uh, a highway that goes through the city and a corridor that serves, uh, our community, the travelers, uh, the, the truckers on the roads, and, and provides for all the things that I think that, that a corridor like this needs, needs to provide. And, you know, whether we, we get it done perfectly, you know, you know, I, I think we'll, we'll, we could debate that. But I think we're, we're, we're pretty darned close.
Nothing's gonna be perfect, and knowing where I just worked previous and what we went through there in the hindsight, cause I went through two huge projects, hindsight is gonna get you every time, because you don't know everything. And it might be a fifty-year project that ten years from now, people are gonna go, what did they think? Because things keep changing, obviously.
I, I don't disagree with that, and I think, you know, the, the wise fiscal management of this project is important too. I mean, I think we're, we're charged with spending these city monies and, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna be spending besides the, the tap money and, and other city dollars that are going, gonna, going to go directly into this, public utilities monies that are gonna go into utility improvements, stormwater improvements, uh, you know, I mean, it's, it's a huge project, but I, but I think we're, we're close. And MINDOT is gonna go out on bids, uh, they're gonna prepare these bid, start to prepare these bid documents. And if we don't endorse it, or if we don't, um, support it, they're still gonna go ahead with this. I mean, this is, this is pretty clear.
Yeah, but they haven't even gone to business yet and offered out their easements and their bids for easements. That hasn't even been done yet.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I don't, yeah, don't doubt that, that they haven't taken all care of all their work. But the fact is that they're gonna start preparing their, their bid documents. And when they do that, unless we have some specific changes that we wanna make, they're gonna, they're gonna do what they presented to us tonight, and, and that's, that's what we're gonna live with. You know, I, I still think that there, there, there are issues out there. I mean, if, if I was a, uh, property owner, business owner, adjacent to that right of way, and had concerns, uh, about the impacts, I would be either here at city council or talking to their, the MINDOT reps to make sure that they, their, their issues were fully understood and, and relayed, um, you know. Whether MINDOT can resolve those, I don't know, but, uh, but there is some issues, I think, that still, um, are beyond our control, uh, because they're on, they're on private property.
I mean, we've, we've had thousands of those types of interactions during the course of this planning project, creating this design, where landowners, adjacent landowners, multiple, multiple times have been brought in to look at where we're at, share their concerns. Lots of changes have occurred based on that, and some changes that people wanted didn't happen too, so... I'm sure that there's a lot of folks out there that, that still would like a particular thing to be different than it is in this design. And, and a lot of the bones of it, like Tim said, they're out of our control at this point. But we have been successful in advocating for the needs of the community as they've expressed it to us in a lot of ways too. So, I mean, we can still do that. But what we're faced with now is this question of the budget that you looked at in December and the design that you looked at today, and, uh, you know, it's not, uh, the last chance you're gonna get to look at it, because it's just the budget still. There isn't any actual bid numbers on it yet. So, you're, you're just gonna get another crack at it then, when you see what the real numbers are for bids. And then when construction occurs, there's always a contingency built into these numbers too, because things happen that you did not expect. So, there's gonna be other opportunities to, to deal with specific instances like that. But based on the budget that you've seen and the design that you've seen, you, it's chance now to say, I don't really wanna do that piece, or I wish we would do more of that.
I wanna hear what Craig has to say.
Yeah.
Yeah, I worked on a few things here.
I saw you writing.
Just to follow or parallel Kelly a little bit, um, like the question I had from a city council member today when we were looking at this, we talked about a few things, and they had said, well, where are the business people? Why aren't they at this meeting? Um, I feel, as, not as a city council member, but as an owner of a store on the highway, during this whole process, if you back up two years, three years, there was a committee that was formed to look into this, to see what the needs are, what the wants are. There were also city council members involved. Uh, the chamber, downtown businesses involved. I called five businesses today, and not one of them ever heard from a city council member. Not one of them ever heard from a design member on, on the team throughout this whole process. Nobody reached out to talk to them about what did they think about the highway being narrowed? What do they think about bump outs that just happened on the last map that we saw, design? What do you think about, uh, land acquisition? Where are you with the lease? Where are you with, uh, signing an easement? We haven't signed an easement. We haven't seen an easement. There's a lot of issues still plaguing businessmen on this highway that they're very up in there about. I'm one of them. A lot of other people are too. I'm somewhat very skeptical about some of the things that I saw and heard at the last presentation when they gave us the complete rundown of how the project's gonna unfold. That's when I first found out the highway was gonna get closed off for six weeks. We were told it was never gonna get closed off, that they couldn't close it off. We were told we were misinformed about that, but that was a project engineer that told us that. So, that's somewhat upsetting. Um, the other issue is, uh, detouring all this traffic during that time of the year. Why are we starting the project at that time of the year? Why don't we start it in May? Why don't we start it earlier to avoid the, quite frankly, economic devastation that some of these businesses are gonna see? And I don't know if it's gonna be one year that's gonna impact them, or two years it's gonna impact them. Um, uh, I don't know, there's other, I think the, the, the overall width of the highway that they're, uh, ending up adopting, that you guys are looking at, that the map shows, I think it's, uh, uncomfortably narrow, in my opinion. Some of the bump out areas are very narrow. You have twenty-four feet, maybe a foot and a half on each side, twenty-seven feet for vehicles to move through in the summertime. In the wintertime, when you have snow, it becomes less. I, I'm concerned about that. I know it's gonna slow down traffic, and people have to drive slower. What I'm concerned about is a truck parking alongside the highway or a car parking alongside the highway and a truck going by, not enough room to open up your door without it getting hit. That's, we have that room now, but this design is gonna be very tight. And if you wanna question me, do what I do. Take a tape measure, go up to the highway and measure a truck parked alongside the road. Measure where the white line is, and then narrow it up five feet. Go do it. I mean, everything looks pretty on paper, but apply it. That's how I see it. I'm worried about the safety of trucks delivering to some of these businesses. Angry Trout, restaurant across the street, Fish House. I thought that was gonna get addressed at the last drawing before I was on the city council. Tonight, it's the same drawing. It never got addressed. I don't know where you're gonna put those trucks when they wanna unload their products. You know, they're gonna block the lane of traffic when they unload their products, is what they're gonna do. They have no choice. Um, I think the communication could have been a little bit better between business people and the DOT. Um, I've had, I just called one person who owns a building in town. They just got notified two weeks ago from the DOT on the appraisal process. Just started for their business, their, their, uh, place, two weeks ago. So, that's still in the works. So, I feel moving ahead and, and, you know, and voting for this and pushing it and, and doing it, it's, it's fine. You know, it's been mulled over, over the course of a long time. However, um, I think the DOT is really behind on, on making the business people that own businesses alongside it feel comfortable with what's actually going on. We almost feel like, I feel like, okay Craig, you haven't seen these things. Doesn't matter, we're gonna do it anyway, and if you don't like it, we're just gonna take it. And that's kinda how I feel right now. You know, if I have land that they need to buy, they're just gonna take it. They already took a driveway away from me, and nobody explained to me why. No one has answered that question. No one said, why are you taking my driveway? You know?
Is that center one still on there?
No, it's gone, and I had a permit to put it there. So, all of a sudden, it's gone. No one said why it's gone. It's just gone, you know? I, as a business person, I'm speaking now, as it's not a city council member, but I share property to allow two other businesses to get to their property. And the center driveway was important over the last twenty-four years to move traffic, big traffic, trucks. You know, the, the drawing shows a lot of cars on it. It doesn't show very many semis. We get a lot of semi-traffic through this town. A lot of tourists with RVs, pulling boats, big vehicles. Uh, you know, it, I like the, the way things look, the way they're trying to focus and do it. I, I think it, it looks nice. It's a big project. But I just think the narrowing of the highway to the extent we're doing it makes me feel really uncomfortable, and I don't know what the impact of that's gonna be in the future. You know, how it's gonna affect traffic going through town? We know what it's like going through two harbors in the summertime. I really don't want Grand Ray to become that, where cars are lined up five miles out of each direction because people are trying to get through town. I think we should really learn from other people's experiences with that. Um, questions I had, uh, other people posed to me was during the process of this construction, the detour of the traffic, that the cars up Eighth Avenue or up, uh, by the Voyager or down through Wisconsin. You know, it's a high-volume part of the summer, and a lot of people that live in residential areas, especially up Eighth Avenue, where I live, are very concerned about that. Um, it's gonna happen if this project goes ahead, and then you're gonna have to deal with those things. Maybe that's what you guys wanna do. I personally like to deal with them, at least now, how it's gonna go, you know, how it's gonna work. Um, I don't know, I just have, I have safety concerns with trucks unloading. I've got pedestrian issues with the detour process. Um, those are just on the surface, but the biggest thing is, uh, this, the state, the DOT was very active in getting, uh, vegan associates up to appraise businesses, and then they just disappeared. Never heard from them again. Mike, you sent me a letter saying that they were sending out letters. I haven't found this person in Grand Ray's got a letter yet. A single one, that owns a business on the highway that they got notified.
An offer letter, you mean?
An offer letter.
Yeah.
So, that was three weeks ago. They said they were gonna send out offer letters. I don't know if anybody's got one. I don't think they have sent them out. Um, so it's kind of frustrating in my part to be sitting here watching this, and, you know, tonight I heard some talk about, well, the downtown businesses are gonna discuss about reaching out and, you know, this is affecting the downtown businesses during the construction, but it's really affecting the highway businesses one hundred percent, you know? And I'm very concerned about the economic impact to these businesses, including mine, during the construction phase. I'm very concerned about that, you know? I don't think anybody has ever really kinda like looked at what that might be. Um, it's, it's...
On that, we've got, I mean, we, the only thing we have, I mean, it's, that's something that is damn near impossible to predict. Um, we do, we do have, you know, some comparables, if you're willing to say that they're comparable, um, with other corridor projects that go through main, main streets or of, of towns. It's what park happens? Alexandria, and then there's another one that they, that they showed, Detroit Lakes. Um, so, I mean, we could, we could certainly get that information to you to see that or to get it out to, you know, to, to business owners. I, I think you bring up a lot of, um, a lot of, of points that, uh, well, I guess maybe the best way to do it is just to ask a direct question. What, what, what could the council do in order to make?
I don't, you know, I really don't know. I guess what troubles me, what troubles me at this point is I can talk to the business people, and they still have the same issues they had two years ago. So, you know, it's just, it's the same thing. It's, you know, they're closing off my driveway. This person's losing their driveway. This person's losing access to this. And they're still concerned about it, and here we are right now. So, they haven't banned, they're not happy with what's going on. I, I'm not happy, and I know the five people I talked today, they, one guy said, I just wish they wouldn't do it. Is my sign gonna get grandfathered in? I wish they wouldn't do it. That's the comment this person made to me, and I thought, well, you know, I don't know about your sign, cause I don't know about my sign. You know, I can't tell you what's gonna happen to your sign.
I can tell them. They showed us that.
They haven't showed the people that own the businesses. This is the point I'm making. Where's the communication, you know?
Should we do something?
I'm not blaming you, but I'm just saying.
I'm cool with you, yeah.
I got a map that says, Craig, this is the green area. What's that green area? We, we need a three-year easement. I said, to what park? Right next to my gas pumps, under my canopy? I'm not signing that.
Yeah, that's for...
I'm not the only one. There's everybody.
That's for their construction equipment and stuff, right?
Yeah, but it's, it shuts you down.
Not really specific what they're gonna use it for.
No.
Just saying.
And it's, for some people, it's right to their back door of their shop. So, you know, the construction part of it is very important, I think, to the people that own businesses. Especially when a big part of town just found out that it's gonna get closed off for a period of time. And that never was brought up ever until that meeting.
Yeah.
And that was at the end of this whole thing.
Yep.
And we haven't really addressed it really. I mean, you know?
Well, we have, and maybe that's a good segue to try and talk about, how do you wanna respond to some of these things?
Right.
And, you know, part of the meeting when they came and told us that they were gonna close the highway, there was also a whole lot of tough medicine at the end that said, they're expecting us to step up and deal with these issues. And, you know, Brad kinda said it again today.
They threw it in the face right at the end of the whole thing.
We better, we better tell MINDOT more about the businesses that need access maintained. And I'm thinking to myself, are you, are you crazy? Court, what, why do we need to tell you that? Don't you just know that? Haven't you done this everywhere? Aren't you supposed to do it? But all of that response still has to come down to, okay, well, they told us we need to do something. We have an opportunity to do something. We'd better do it. So, we've got a group, and anybody who has concerns that wants to be a part of working on solutions to it can participate in that effort, where we can figure out, how do we tell MINDOT what they need to do to maintain accesses? And how do we tell MINDOT, or how do we leave MINDOT out of it and do it ourselves? Make sure that there's good signage to direct people to where they need to go during construction? And how do we deal with, uh, businesses that have real big concerns about impacts they're gonna have financially? And is there anything as a community? And is there anything as a community that we can come together and do about that? I don't know, and none of us.
Well, I think part of it, I think part of it is the timing of when they're gonna start this. I mean, that's, I mean, you know, I don't wanna, yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying.
I just talked to Michael yesterday, and he updated me on their, um, their schedule a little bit. And kind of acknowledged again the, it's a slower process than they were hoping for the right-of-way acquisition. I mean, obviously, everything we're hearing from folks on our end that are dealing with it, it doesn't, I'm not sure he quite comprehends how big an issue it is yet, but, but, uh, he said regardless of that, they're not changing the letting date. So, you know, there's too many other funding sources that are locked into this, that they have to be bidding this thing in May, and they're gonna do it. So even if some parts of this are gonna fall behind because they're not done with their right-of-way acquisition, the place we're in, the things we're talking about now, like that's on, it's happening, and so we still have to figure out, what are we gonna do?
Well, that, that sounds like, that sounds like the city then, this is the place for the city to then advocate as hard as we can. And not to say that we haven't been, I think that the city has been a pretty, um, a pretty active advocate, um, for, you know, maybe the business owners would disagree, but, but for.
I think the ones on the highway probably disagree with you.
Well, then, then we need to, then we need to work with them.
That's my opinion from people I talked to in the last.
I think then we need to, we need to get those, we need to get the names of those people who are, who are saying they don't feel good about it, and we need to go and we need to talk to them, and we need to make sure that, that we understand where, where they're coming from. Because, I mean, it's my understanding that, that the businesses along the corridor had been, um, had been brought into the conversation about, about what their, um, uh, of what, what the highway project, how the highway project would impact their businesses. Um, not exactly sure what that looks like. I, the only conversations that I personally had with business owners along the corridor were one-on-ones where people came and talked to me, or I ran into them and then asked them what they thought. And some of those got to be bigger conversations than, than just a, hey, how you doing? But, uh, but I don't know exactly where, where all the business owners are. If you have that information, that's really important so that we can.
I do, but I just think, I think the big stance still right now, at least for, the one people that I talked to is, what's the DOT up to? What are they doing? Whereas, what's my, why do they need this land? What's the lease look like? Why does that have to be three years? Why do they need all this land? How is that gonna impact my business more than just the project itself, you know? And if there's land that needs to be acquired, the easements, uh, the appraisal, I'm sure the appraisals have been done a long time ago. I, I know that. It's just that nothing's came out of it yet. You know, then they would do one lot and not do the other lot. I have two lots. You know, at one time I was explaining, we're gonna appraise this one, but we're not doing that one yet. And I'm wondering, well, why don't you do all of them? I mean, what do you, you can't, you know? And I think the, the sooner we're brought into this with what, what, what we're dealing with, I think the better people would feel about it, the better I'd feel about it, 'cause I'm still in a lot of uncertainty about what's going on with my, my property. You know, really, to tell you the truth, I see what it's gonna look like on paper, but I don't know the nuts and bolts of it, you know?
Can we?
And I think that's important.
Can we send a letter on behalf of the council, the city, signed by five of us, to MINDOT? Stating a list of our questions, and we'd like answers, or here's the deadline when we want answers? Not that they have to follow it, but can we put that together and say, hey, we have concerns? Because after all, I think we are representing these people to MINDOT. Am I?
Well, you got a email.
Look, we, we've interjected ourselves and offered our services to represent people. We've also tried to make the direct connection for people. That you as a council can certainly fill that role. I think that it's easier, uh, to do joint action like that, to get a good response. What, what are your questions and concerns you need answers to?
Well, it's, it, it sounds to me, and, you know, to, to take that question and, and, you know, bring it out a little bit more. It sounds, so right now, we have a motion and a second on the floor. We're still in discussion for the approval of these plans. Um, but it sounds to me like.
We don't have a second.
No, I didn't even make a motion.
Oh, you just made a statement?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Well, then, then, oh yeah, that's right, because, because I just asked what everybody's thinking about. 'Cause I didn't wanna, 'cause I didn't wanna have, I didn't wanna have a motion sitting out. See, I was, I was smarter than I thought I was. But, um.
That's good.
Yeah. So, so it sounds like we, we have another step in this iterative process. It sounds like, you know, we don't have to approve this until the end of the month.
You don't ever have to approve this. This is happening, whether you take a position on it or not. If you want it to be different than that, you need to take a position that's different than that.
The position that we, if we need, if we need to advocate, if we need to advocate for the businesses along the corridor.
We need to get on that.
Then we need to.
Let's separate this, though.
Well, yeah, that's what I think. We've got a couple of different issues. One is, one, what I was talking about was the, the design that we dealt with today. I mean, there's a lot of issues related to that. And I think the, the last part that you were talking about, Craig, has to do with the construction easements, which is something that we've not, we have no knowledge at all of what those construction easements even look like, and what that communication has been. I mean, I, I mean, I can sympathize with you that, that they came, came to you, gave you some information and never, never, you know?
Never came back.
Came back. I mean, I, I mean, I'd be upset too if I was presented with something that was gonna have significant impacts on my property and had no explanation, no understanding how it went and what was gonna happen.
We, after your last meeting, we did immediately share that feedback with, with Michael and said, listen, the council's been hearing from people, and there's real concerns about the way that the right-of-way acquisition process is happening, and you need to know about it, and tell me what's going on. So they, that's when they said, well, we're sending out, uh, offers, you know?
The next day. I don't know who they sent them to. They said they were gonna send them to those people who are impacted early on in the project, which means people to the east. I don't know what that means.
That, well, that, that's a good question. I mean, the, the folks in the core of the downtown are not on the first-to-be-impacted list. And they probably wouldn't be sending them to a lot of those. But my understanding was that your business was potentially gonna be having construction happen this year. So I, but maybe they're changing their mind about that based on how this is going.
I remember anything from Broadway going east is potentially on the list. Be impacted this year, whereas other businesses in the rest of the downtown core wouldn't be affected until 2020, so.
So I sent an email with a question, and I got an email back with a brief response. But maybe we can ask for a more thorough response from MINDOT. A reporting from them on what's going on with the right-of-way acquisition, what their timetable looks like, what they're expecting to have.
How many have been, like, actually sent? I mean, that should be of the number of property owners that are affected, like.
But let's think about what our purpose here is. Are we trying to put pressure on MINDOT to do a better job? Are we expecting it to go faster? Do we care if it goes faster? Or do we just want it to be done right? Do we think that by expressing our displeasure, that that's gonna change something on their behalf? I mean, what, what are we wanting to get out of this?
Well, my thought, my thought in, in terms of supporting the design that we have in front of us was, was that MINDOT's gonna go ahead and prepare bid documents based on that design. I would like the city to be supportive of that design, so that when they do that, they know that the city's not gonna come back and try to blindside them, you know, which, which is really gonna have no impact at all, 'cause they're gonna go forward with that, uh, with that bid, that bid anyway. And the thing that I think is important, though, is that we get the cooperation from MINDOT so that we can still interject in this process all the way through, from start to finish, our concerns and what we see as needs, so we can help support, you know, businesses or, you know, others that, in the community that have concerns about what might be happening. Because they're, they have not, they haven't resolved all of the, the, the details of, at least to my satisfaction, in terms of what's gonna happen. I mean, the most, to me, the most relevant one is, is what's gonna happen over at Cobblestone when they dig that big hole and what they're, what they're gonna do. And, I mean, they kinda pass it off and say, well, that's, that's outside of the right-of-way, so it's not our project. It's now MPCA's project. Well, you know, that doesn't make any difference. You know, somebody's gotta deal with it.
Doesn't make any difference.
It's gonna go to the front door of those businesses.
I don't think the businesses know it.
It's a ten-foot hole.
Well, I don't know how they might not know it, but.
They don't know they're gonna dig to the front door. Just phone that out to me. So, I mean, that's, here's what's upsetting to me. To have to deal with the process DOT has to go through with me, just as a landowner, and then to watch the city council approve plans and, and move this thing ahead. Okay, I understand.
We're not moving it ahead.
No, 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 I, I'm, I'm, I understand.
Yeah.
But, I'm real hesitant to get behind this project because of the uncertainty I'm dealing with right now. Does that make sense?
I mean, I understand where you're coming from.
Okay.
My, my perspective is, having been involved with this for five years.
I know that, and I have been too. I went to the very first meeting. Which every one of them, and I, I understand that, but that's my thinking right now. Because there's too much uncertainty with me financially right now. And traffic movement, driveways, just easements, all these things that play into two summers, two years of operating. You know, I'm very uncertain because I haven't gotten answers. I'm waiting. In the meantime, we see the DOT, we see, well, we see the design team doing their thing. You guys are approving all this stuff before I got on the city council, and I'm sitting there going, wow, we got all this going on, we got this going on. You think you'd wanna fix this first before we do this? Or try to get it more coordinated so there's not a big gap between, you know, these issues that affect the corridor business people? That's, you know, I think that the sooner they address these issues, I think, the better it's gonna be for everybody involved, including, you know, being able to sit here and say, yeah, I approved this, yeah, I wanna do this, yeah. The people are behind me that, that voted half for me and half for you, you know what I'm saying? That's who I'm sitting here for. I mean, I.
Some people voted for both of us.
Some people voted for both of us, yeah.
But most people voted for her.
Yeah, but most people voted for her. Yeah, but you know, when, when somebody calls me and says, hey, what's going on? You know, I wanna support their opinion. That's my issue. I think personally, I think narrowing the highway, as narrow as you're gonna be doing it at some of these areas, I think you're gonna regret it. I'm not behind that. I think we should seriously look at what those measurements really are, what they mean. You know, that's why when I saw the bumpouts the first time you and I were talking, I asked the guy from the DOT right-of-way, you're changing the speed limit? Well, no. I think you might want to. Nope, it's gonna be thirty. Well, you know? I know the design dictates the speed people are gonna drive. I get it.
Yeah.
But the speed limit's thirty.
Yeah.
So I don't care. If you wanna funnel them into a bike path, someone's gonna drive thirty.
Yes, more than, more than once.
You see? So let's try to make it safe if that's how it's gonna be. That's, that's my concern. I mean, then we get snow like we had, like we have now. All of a sudden, your lane is not as wide as it is. It's narrower because of snow. You know, we're stepping cars pretty close together. There's a couple of bumpouts in that map that I saw that I questioned. The twenty-four feet is what they are. That's pretty narrow when you're getting trucks going through.
But he, but he did state though, too, that that was the twenty-four feet was the driving width, and that there still is the gutter portion.
The gutter and the curb, right?
Twenty-seven.
Almost, almost, almost thirty feet, he said.
Okay. It's still narrower than the fifty-five that it is now.
Or sixty-two in some places, yeah.
Well, you go measure these things, I don't know, it's all right.
So.
No, that's great. I appreciate all that. Um, I think that, to me, that, that identifies, that identifies some things that, that I think the city council needs to, needs to get on. And, um, I would like to, I'd like to talk with you afterwards about, about who these folks are, so that I can go on. I, I, I mean, I'd like to talk to them personally and see, because I think that there is advocating that we can do for them that could make a huge difference, um, both for their businesses during the construction and for, for making sure that what's represented in, in the design is what is best for their, for their businesses. Considering that we've, that we've gone through this iterative process with MINDOT. And, you know, if you look at the original, um, the original plans that, that CJ made on this, there's a lot of stuff in that that just we couldn't do because, because of all the bureaucracy and logistics that, that MINDOT has.
Because reasons.
Because reasons, yeah. Because, because laws and rules and stuff like that. That's why we can't have nice things. But I would, I would like to, I would like to go out and, and talk with, with those, those folks, so.
Well, and I hear what you're saying too, Craig, and there's, I mean, they're really dropping the ball, it sounds like, on this, uh, right-of-way stuff.
Can I, I'll give you my impression.
It's confusing because they're appraising two of my properties, and the next time the appraiser came up, he said, well, not, they told me not to appraise that one. Now I'm gonna work on your store. I said, well, why aren't you appraising that lot? 'Cause you gotta do the whole, all of it. Then they leave, and I haven't heard back on that, you know? As far as the easement goes, it was on a map. And I asked them what that green area was. That's easement they need, and they might be to sign a three-year easement. And I said, well, boy, that closes off my whole store. I can't do that. Then they left. Then I never heard back. So I don't know where I am personally with them in owning a business, but I know nobody else has received any information either that I've talked to. You know, so I, I just don't know where they're at with it.
Well, the, the part I'm struggling with is the link between that issue and the design that we looked at today issue. And I just, I'm not seeing how the one can affect the other at all. That's, so I'm looking for guidance from you on what kind of action you wanna see us take that you think might help with the right-of-way issue. Because I don't think the design issue can affect it at all.
I don't know, I don't know what you can take. I mean, they're just gonna do it when they do it. I just don't know. Are they gonna wait until June of two thousand nineteen to hand me a letter? This is your, sign this easement? You know what I'm saying? Sooner the better. Otherwise, you know, some people are probably gonna get attorneys, and this is gonna get tied up somewhere for a while.
My, I expect that.
Forever, which pushes this thing out further and further. I mean, I'm just fixed, try to fix the problems if there are problems. That's kinda what I'm looking at.
So would it, would it be helpful to have Michael give us a report? What's going on with right-of-way acquisition? How many people have they talked to? What's their schedule look like? All that kinda stuff?
I mean, I, I would say, I guess my, I, I mean, to go back all the way around, I guess, 'cause I haven't said anything about the design or where I feel about that, but then also including this. Like, I think, um, for the most part, what the design looked like, that stuff that they brought in front tonight, or this afternoon, was fine. I still feel like that third and third, uh, area just seems like, uh, well, now we've got this thing, we should put something here. 'Cause we can't make this street connect to the highway legally with the approach angle. So, um, and again, thinking of like the financial side of it. I think that, like, the longevity of the, the steel, the concrete, the wood, um, fixtures, benches, built-ins, planters, those types of things, I felt like it made sense. It didn't seem like anything was gonna take extra maintenance. Um, obviously, there's snow removal. Sounds like there had been some conversation on like not keeping a twelve-foot five, twelve-foot wide walking path, but there, I mean, down, so basically plow width, um, which is like the blower. Is that what that is? Yeah. Which on some sides of the road is actually wider than what the sidewalks are, right?
Yeah.
And most of them, 'cause they.
Well, I mean, they're building a four-foot sidewalk on the south side of the highway.
Right.
We're not gonna plow that in the wintertime.
Right.
We can't.
Yeah. But I, so I, I felt okay about that, but I do agree with Craig on, I feel like the first meeting at the library before they moved it up to the church, because of the people that showed up. The first meeting at the library, that whole parking lane in front of the Harbor House and the Angry Trout was identified as that common median lane was the spot where trucks need to park. And I know that at the last meeting, the one that Craig and I first talked about, and then I feel like even the one where they told us the timeline stuff, like, again, we brought that up, like, this, this, this is gonna be a major problem. And so that hasn't been changed. And it felt like there was at some point said, oh, yeah, no, okay, well, we'll do that. 'Cause it wasn't like my group. It was every single table in that room said, this needs to be left like this. And I, I haven't necessarily heard a reason on why that can't change back.
It can't be, um, the reason that they told people right-of-way is it's not legal for a truck to park in the center turn lane and unload their goods. And so they have no intention of allowing that to continue, whether or not it's in there or it's not in there. That, that's not legal for them to do. It's not safe. That's not legal for them to do. It's not safe. It's, it's a terrible situation. It's. The best of what they had, right? It's why they're doing it.
There's room for it now. May not be legal, but there's room for it. So when you go to the plan.
Yeah, there's.
Now there's not room for it, so they're gonna park in the lane of traffic, cause you know they are, they have to. They have no choice.
No, they have choices.
They don't. If they can't get against the curb, they have to park in this lane of traffic.
They, but they can get against the curb. And, and here's where, so we've had these conversations. With, with these groups of local businesses and, and offered them multiple solutions and, and you can't find a solution that meets all their needs because it's trade-off here. We have a turn lane so that people can move. We have, we, or we have a driveway or we have parking or we have a loading space. You know, you can pick two of those. You can't have four, but they, everybody needs four, right? So what, what the last situation was with that loading dock was, we'll. We'll, uh, improve the alley behind the north side businesses so that trucks can get through there securely. And the south side businesses will make their own arrangements. And if they're comfortable with the arrangements that they make, then we won't put a loading. Space on the highway.
Loading zone?
And then it can be parking. And if they're, and, and if that doesn't work for some reason, then we'll take a couple of parking spaces away and turn it into a loading zone instead. So, you know, that is dealt with and it's not dealt with so that it's perfect and everybody's, all their needs are met. But there is a strategy in place.
And I think that, so that answer to that question goes back to the overall. Where I've been approached by a handful of people, business owners on the corridor, but not. Many. I mean, I've had people approach me about the questions about this whole. Uh, lease or what's it, whatever the.
Easement?
The easement or the stuff that they're trying to work out to have the three-year, you know, easement on your property. But. I think of lane width, I think of that parking thing, the thing that we brought up, there was an answer to that. Right? There was an answer. There was a solution. Again, maybe not a solution that appeases everything, but. I'm not an engineer. I've never designed a highway and I defer to MINDOT and whether that's smart or not, but that's. What, I, I don't know anything about highway design and I just try to understand why they do the things that they do. And. Yeah, I mean, I guess you, you, you could be right, Craig, that that is gonna feel, I mean, I, I, I know what a twelve-foot width is on a, a driving lane that's, it's smaller. But I think, I think it would be important for us to get behind the design. And then also to get behind the people along the corridor who don't feel like that they're being listened to and make sure that we advocate. And that we push MINDOT to make sure that they can get answers. Because I assume when I hear like, oh, this stuff is happening that, oh, then somebody has approached them to deal with this easement or access issue. And then that is just going forward. That's, you know. Why would we be involved in that as city councillors? We wouldn't be. That's a, it's a conversation between MINDOT and the property owners. And even if it was happening between the city and MINDOT. I, that wouldn't be anything that you guys report to us. That would be something that.
Oh, it'll be reported to you. They will be getting easements from us. That's just the.
Where's that at? Have we gotten ours?
Yeah, well, we've received notice that other people have received that here's where they want an easement from. And basically we said, listen, don't. Leave us for last, right?
Yeah.
Because everything they're talking about easements for us, we're talking about with them when we look at the design.
I mean, that whole part of Rec Park, the whole side hill is gonna be a construction, construction easement.
Right, yeah. Yeah, right. So we said, don't waste your time talking to us. Go deal with everybody else.
Yeah.
So it sounds like we have a little bit of homework to do on this.
Well, I'll make some phone calls tomorrow.
Yeah.
I'm calling Vegan Associates, cause they're the ones who are supposed to be doing the crazy one. I don't know why I haven't heard back from them. And they actually are the ones that brought forth the fact that I gotta sign an easement. So I don't know if they're. Part of that discussion with DOT or not. I don't know.
I don't either.
DOT hasn't said anything to me.
I don't get the impression that this is Michael's area. But he's the project manager. He's been good about responding to us on anything we've asked for. And so if we want some more from him, I, that's what I would recommend is we start there.
Well, I would suggest that, that, that we send a letter to Michael and make it clear that, that they're business owners that are, that are. Getting nervous and concerned about what's happening and need to, need to have some answers or at least some, somebody from MINDOT contacting them. With regard to how this project is going forward and what, what those impacts might mean to them. I mean, it's, I mean.
Or just let us know that that's actually been happening.
Or, or, or whatever the status is and what, what, what the timeline is for getting that completed, because if they've given business owners some impression that something's happening and nothing's happening. That's not, that's not good for the business owners either. They, they need to make plans too. And I mean, these businesses are gonna be significantly impacted. I mean, I don't think anybody has any doubt about that. Build a new highway and tear up the street in front of, in front of their business and close, close some, some of the, the streets. I mean, it's.
Well, for a lot of us, I mean, it's the summertime when you actually can afford to be in business. The rest of the months you can't.
I mean, I, I understand completely.
The summers are very important and to lose a lot of summer business, I don't care if you're a coffee shop, a gas station or. You're selling craft beer. It's, it's. Important to get your, the summer volume under your belt because otherwise you, it's a long winter, you know? And to, if we can adjust the time start on the project to. Look at that and deal with that, I think that's important too. I mean, you know, when do they want to start this project? June? May?
They're not even gonna let it until May.
They're gonna let it in May and two thousand nineteen start when?
For this year, but then they, but they have made commitments of what, what's gonna happen within the city during that time period. Uh, most of that's gonna be outside. It's, it's two, twenty twenty.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, I know the, the bridge and stuff, but I mean.
They're not intending to do a lot of stuff in, in twenty nineteen in, in the city that would disrupt.
Then when would the project officially disrupt the town in twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty, the entire summer.
Starting in May.
Starting in when?
And then having.
Starting as soon as they can.
Day one, yes, as soon as they can.
Okay.
And then having things, there's some contingency about that October, first week in Oc-, or sorry, first week in August.
They think that if, if things go well, that they can be done with that three block stretch between Broadway and Third and open it.
By Fisherman's Pits.
By August. So the August and September.
Six week, six week period where that big hole is gonna be.
Right.
And that's when the absolute closure of the highway exists, so.
And it doesn't matter how good a job they do, this is gonna be a, it's gonna be a mess.
Yeah.
It will be.
Yeah, that's the people of Two Harbors.
Well, I understand, just, uh.
Yeah, so I think.
I'm concerned about the economic impact. I'm concerned about the fact that, you know, you're still paying taxes. You're not doing business. I mean, it's an important thing to people that businesses.
Well, and to have, have some, have, have a better communication or understanding of what is gonna happen seems to be like the missing piece. Right?
Well. Well, we kind of found out what's gonna happen.
Talk about schedule with people.
Yeah.
We can't, I don't know what to talk to people about when it comes to right away. I mean.
No, that's what I mean, like.
But that seems like what's causing a lot of problems right now for you.
Not between us and.
Well, what's the, did, did you meet, I can't, I have her card. I don't remember her name. The, the lady that works for the state that is, that, that works with the real estate land acquisition. Part of the deal. Did you meet her at all? Did she use the grammar ring a couple of times?
I met two of them that were in town.
Okay.
But just, you know, they zipped in and zipped out and I haven't heard from them, so.
Well, she was very nice and she came to talk to Lynn and I and. We talked about a lot of things and. You know, I talked to her about my concerns and stuff and she was very, um, surprised that there were any issues. Well, what do you mean, there's issues? I thought this thing was, everything was, everybody's happy with everything. I'm like. What are you guys doing? You know? Oh gee, you know, we don't, we have, I have to bring, I'll, I'll bring this back to our meeting and we'll talk about it with the engineers. You know, cause I told her, I'm concerned about. Easement. I'm concerned about, I've got six thousand square feet of land that they gotta, that's our estate right away. Then, then a survey team came in right before the snow and we surveyed everything. You know, and then I got maps from a reassessor. Was assessing the property and then everybody left. So I don't know where they are with it.
It sounds like, it sounds like.
You know, it's kind of confusing in a way. And it's like, okay, maybe they're not gonna, maybe I don't have, maybe I don't know what they're doing, you know, I don't. You know, I did ask him, is my, is my sign in the corridor? No, we think you're right on the edge. I'm saying, well. Do I pay to move it? You pay to move it. Well, if it's gotta be moved, we pay. And I'm going, well, okay, but I paid for all this already, you know, the pavement, the blacktop, the curbing and all that stuff you're tearing out, so. Who pays me for the permit I have? We'll have to pay for that. What's it worth? We don't know. So I mean, there's, you know.
Well, I think, I think we can do, we can do some prodding.
That's personally for my business, but I think other people have the same issues with, with easements and stuff like that, so.
Yes, yeah, it sounds, it sounds like, it sounds like if this is, if this was, is as, as widespread an issue as it sounds like it is, I, I think that it, it, it warrants us. Doing a little poking and prodding around with, you know, contacting Michael and, and, and requesting some more information about how this works and. You know, like, like what Mike said. He's been. Pretty good at getting back to us with information about, about what's been, what the situation actually is. So I, I feel like if we ask direct, you know, direct questions about this sort of thing on behalf of the. Of the business owners along the corridor, I feel like he'll, you know, if he does, if he's not the guy who deals, deals with it, then he'll at least be able to take up that information for us or. I mean, I think that's our best way of getting an idea to people who are concerned. And I think that we have a responsibility, responsibility to do that if we, if we can, if we, if we can. You know, help provide that information. So, I mean. Yeah, I don't know, I don't know what else, I mean, what else we, we have to, to discuss here in this particular situation. I feel like I, I have. An idea of what to work on. You know, going forward so that we can get some more information here.
Here's, here's a suggestion that, uh, you know. MINDOT's gonna go out on bid, bid on this project. Are there any elements of this? City side of this plan? That we want to modify or change, you know, I mean, the question has come up about the Third Avenue, Third Street, uh, location and whether or not that, that. Is worth spending that money not knowing if that's really the right thing for that location. I mean, do we, do we want to have MINDOT include that in, in the, in the bid documents? Once they do, it's gonna happen. We're gonna end up paying for it. So, so I mean, those are the, the types of things that we could interject our opinion in right now and say. You know, we're not quite sure that that's the fit for us, you know, that, that, that makes sense. And, and maybe there's other things too, but, but to me, that, that location seems to be the one that's the most questionable and. If we didn't want to go ahead and support the, the whole plan, are there, are the portions of it that we would pull out and say, let's just hold off on this.
You know, I like, I like, I, I mean, I question the design, the, the material choice on the, the. I mean, I like, I like the sign idea at the campground. The material that he's planning and they're planning on using for the background of that sign. I think over time will, it fades out as the same material as what the skate park's made out of.
Oh.
Up there. Again, like, I don't know if that matters, but if it's going out for bid.
No, that's our project.
That one is, okay, so.
Park board or whatever.
It's the stuff that's within the right, within the right of way.
And I know, I don't think the park board is.
Well, I mean.
Ready to go on that sign. I think they've got somewhere thinking.
The landing is, the landing is part in and part out, so.
I really like.
Landing is our project too, but still, we're, I mean, CJ's designing it on our behalf and creating bid documents. If we have misgivings about it, now's the time. If we don't, he's gonna keep working on it.
I thought that was great. I mean, I, I really liked that. I liked the campground sign idea, the look, you know, whatever the look of it, but that, to me, it's, I get hung up on the third and third thing. I don't. Or whatever it is, the Third Avenue East.
Yeah.
You know, the origins of that.
Looks like it was like, well, here's what we gotta do, block.
It, it was more of an observation.
Street there.
That Third Street and Fifth Avenue come together at the courthouse and create this triangle and, and. It didn't really get a lot of legs right away. Cause, you know, I'm getting the same sort of looks from you all that you kind of got when we heard that idea, which is, what are you talking about? There's, there's nothing at Third Street. But then it was more of a, well, we're making, we're making spaces and this is a space where you have an opportunity to do something. That's what it's about. If you don't, if you don't think that's a good place to invest money in making a space, this, this is a great time to say that.
I honestly think that running Third Street straight down, curb down. And not having that little dead end thing, which seems like a nightmare for. And I mean, where you can fit.
Third Avenue, Third Avenue East?
Yeah, running Third, I'm saying.
I mean, reconnect it to the highway.
Right.
Which is not on the table.
Why don't you get in there and turn around and get out?
That's what I'm saying. So just stop Third Street where it hits Third Avenue West, so. Everything south of just becomes a grassy triangle there below the, the. I mean, cause there's a fair amount, that's all gonna get.
You'll lose parking, you know, that the dental shop needs.
Well, and that, but that whole thing has been, has been up for discussion because even the way it's planned right now, they're putting, they're putting a park down there at the end of the street.
Right.
But the, the end of the street is still.
Well, we, I've told them, don't, don't design that yet. Because again, we get to decide that on our own timetable and our own schedule and our own budget, everything else.
Okay.
So, I mean, we've, they've, they've drawn three or four different ideas for what that could look like. As a parking lot or as a total park grassy area and like, you know.
Great big roundabout.
We don't know because are we gonna go back to the dental office and say, you know, we're not building you a parking lot. You're gonna have to build it. Or are we gonna partner with them? Or are we just gonna give it to them? Or what are we gonna do?
But we could take out the monument and the gathering spot there and just the, the. The multi-purpose trail will just go through there just like it is and there won't be any, maybe, maybe there's an additional tree or a, a street light or something. I mean.
Now that the origin of it though, which is just kind of a strange idea that Third Street could be a significant route. Forget that.
Yeah.
Listen to what the CEC folks said tonight. They're all for it and they like it because. It, there's not a lot of spaces like that on that side of town and it's kind of the first opportunity to signal that, you know, you're here and welcome. So they, they're appreciating it for that. I'm not advocating for it either way. I just want to remind you that you asked them to look at this and they did and they liked it and.
And that might, and that might be a project five or 10 years down the line. Once the project, the, the highway is completed and that part of the town changes a little bit because now you have curb and gutter instead of just a open, open shoulder. Has a whole different feel to it, uh, maybe five or 10 years down the line. It seems like it could be appropriate.
Well, again.
Somebody else could make that decision.
And again, if you look at that side of town and becoming welcoming. You know, truthfully, it starts out right out by the state highway garage, that area. There's some, it's improving. Um, then you move further in and there's some. Messes that could probably be cleaned up. And then you get to where the spot is at Third and Third, but if you look across the street. At what's going on there. Again, aesthetically, to me at this point in time, unless we're gonna tell somebody that they gotta clean up their yard and all the employees that park there need to move away. Which then where do they go? I just, I would prefer to see that we put it in as grass right now and again, five years, two years, 10 years, whatever it may be. It's still our property. We still can develop it, but maybe we don't spend that money right now. When you're not getting to look at much of anything. And then we found out that there's trees that are coming down there as well, so. I just don't know why spend the money. I also wonder with some of the stuff that's going on in front of the pharmacy and the development there. It's pretty. It looks nice, but we have that just half a block east in front of a library with everything that's going on there. That seems like a better gathering spot, a place to sit, a place to, to read a book, to text a friend. Than right in front of the pharmacy at that very busy intersection. And we have a lot that's going on there, so I'm wondering if there would be some things that we could maybe trim back there. I mean, they were talking about trees and putting shrubs right up against the building. Well.
No, I don't, I don't think they were. I think they were just acknowledging the existing shrubs.
There's a door there in another building. They gotta, there's gotta be sidewalk access.
And they have that.
There is.
Yeah.
I just, I just didn't know where I was looking when I.
Yeah. But I thought there was a lot, kind of a lot going on there. So those were the two spots. I love what they're doing for the community landing spot. I thought that was beautiful. You know, I, I think the accumulation of people who come here, come to sit by the lake, not along the Highway sixty-one corridor. I recognize that we're trying to get people to move through town and walk and do more, but we still have to recognize that we have a population here that for. Over thirty years, we sold Grand Moran, come in retirement, come and make this your retirement home, come and live on the beautiful North Shore. Some of those people are here year round, some aren't. They're, they're elderly, they're aging. I look at, I'll take my two parents. We want to create it to be a walking downtown. Well, my father with Parkinson's isn't gonna do it. And my mother who has a walker because she's got. Well, my father with Parkinson's isn't gonna do it and my mother who has a walker because she's got compounded fractures, scoliosis and other things is not gonna do it. Do I look at them and say, well, you can't use the downtown? Or do I automatically become the person that has to do everything because they can't walk into the downtown corridor? I think we have to consider those people and make sure that they have abilities. And people who have handicaps have abilities to get into some of the places. So, um, but I would like to change the Third and Third and maybe a little bit in front of the pharmacy.
I can speak a little bit to, I mean, the, the spaces specifically that, that you identified, Third and Third in front of the pharmacy, those, those, those two spots right there. A big part of why the Third and Third place exists is number one, opportunity. Opportunity and intention of like having the corridor be, um, be a place where people are able to hang out. You bring up a really, a really good point that when I'm thinking about the, about the Third and Third, I'm thinking about the Third and Third looking north. Like across the dentists, if you turn and look south, it's a very different view. Um, but.
Bench faces south, southwest.
But part of the reason that was put in there in the discussions about design was because it's a strategic location as well for, um, for giving people who are walking a place to rest. You know, so that there's a place to stop and a place to, um.
We got benches.
Yeah. So, so, I mean, that could, if that's really what the purpose of Third and Third is, we can accomplish that with different, different things than, than a big built, you know, plaza.
But isn't some of that occurring in front of the post office and for, I mean, are people gonna sit down every three blocks if they're walking?
I, I know some people who will.
Some people do. You're right, but.
Depends on where you start from.
But how much money?
Well, he lives further east, so.
How much money are we looking to spend for some people? So.
Well, I mean, it's, it's an intention. I think that a lot of that stuff was put in because of, because of the intention of how do we build a complete street? How do we make something that's going to be, that's going to be useful and available to all people? You know, the, the, I like the idea of having Third and Third stop there. I, I think, or, you know, having there like be a stop there, you know? Like having there be a place for people to rest and to sit. Um, I'm gonna have to take a look at that in my brain a little bit more now that, you know, I wasn't even thinking about it, looking south. But, uh, but also I think it's.
Well, I'm looking north, you're looking at Alyssa's building or the trees that are not gonna be there.
The trees are gonna go. Trees are gonna go?
So then you're looking further.
What's the, what is the issue exactly with the trees?
There's a catch basin at, at the entrance to that culvert that they have to put some retaining walls on, which.
And they're going how far north from the highway? Those trees go way up.
Fifty feet, I bet.
Well, those trees go more, those trees go more than 50 feet.
Yeah, he showed, he showed me the plans after I, you know, went and asked him.
It's a big, it's a big thing, you know, like.
So they're widening the catch basin?
I don't know if they're widening, but they're, but they're extending.
Is it gonna be railings and stuff? I mean, what's it gonna look like? A big hole going down into a river that has no water in it? Cause I mean, really.
To tell us how you really feel about it.
Well.
I mean, seriously.
But when we get really heavy rain.
I mean, the trees have been there for a hundred years and it hasn't posed a, I have never seen water go over that highway. Have you guys?
Not over, but it's been close. Remember we had the, um, no, when we had the heavy rains.
Big old flood and clod of a crowd.
And it went by George Humphrey and the whole thing.
The landowner came to me, was concerned about why they gotta cut the trees down and I said, I'm gonna find out. So I'm trying to find out why they gotta cut the trees down. Cause that's another deal of, you know, we're doing this, but we're not gonna tell you why. Like you're taking away my driveway, but you're not gonna tell me why. I mean, come on, you know, communicate. That's my thing is, you know, he wants to know, so.
I wonder if for that catchment basement, um. What?
I don't know, I just.
Catch basin, not basement.
I said cat, catchment basin.
And those trees are on.
Is that catch basin?
Alyssa's property. They are, okay.
I wonder, uh, okay, I'll just make a note on that. Anyway.
They gonna replant anything in there after they take all this down? I mean, is there a possibility of trying to make?
Damage to her property, so you just gotta compensate some, in some fashion.
Instead of just being a slope into the river? I mean.
You'd think they would want it to be vegetated.
I would think so.
Well, it's gonna have to be, I mean, that's the only thing that's been holding that base, that's the bank together.
Right. The trees are holding it together now, so we're gonna take away the system.
Well, he said something about retaining well?
Well, it's right, right at the entrance to the culvert that there'll be a large, big U shape retaining, kind of a catch basin.
Or just down by the highway, but I mean, the last tree is more than 50 feet.
But that, that culvert is gonna extend beyond, well beyond the highway.
Okay.
At least according to the plans.
And they gotta direct everything into that culvert.
Down into, uh, you know, Odin's, Odin's, you know.
Right. Actually, Peter owns all that property or that thing.
I'm wondering if it'll look somewhat like it is up by George Humphrey and Rocky Johnson.
Probably take it down that way then. I don't know.
We can, we can ask to take a look at, I mean, do we have those specific plans? There was a copy of them today.
Yeah.
That was the thousand page day deal.
Yeah.
We can take a look at that and see what it looks like. So it sounds like we still have a lot of questions to answer.
Well, I mean, what I think, you know, we, we raised this question when we talked about this in December is that there's still a lot of unanswered questions that we need to have direct involvement with MINDOT on through this whole process. And this, I think, is just one of those stages where MINDOT's gonna go ahead and, and start their process. It's gonna put a certain portion of this in action, irregardless of whether or not we support it or not. I mean, I, like I say, I, I would like to have us support it, but if there's parts of it that we're not ready to say we're committed to, then let's pull that out. If it's city stuff, I mean, if you look at this, this big chart over here on the, on the wall, we put that up almost two years ago. We got a lot of stuff in the red.
Just one year ago, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was winter.
It was May, eight months ago. Yeah.
Eight months ago.
Yeah.
Seemed like winter.
Seems like forever. Well, a lot, we, we have a lot of stuff in that later category and right now it's all seeming to get kinda cast into the now category. And we could pull, pull back and, and decide that some of that stuff is gonna happen, happen later in this project.
Well, we should probably redo that before you use that too much, cause the whole budget's different than it was in May.
Well, it is, but it, but it's, that's a representation that, you know, how, how we might use the TAP money and how we would use city money and some of the stuff that we would think about. Well, maybe it's just not relevant right now and we would look for other sources of money or figure out a different, different plan or something that would allow us more, more time. And this month, we might have a couple of those opportunities right now to do that before MINDOT puts it in the bid. Because once it's in the bid, they're, they're gonna do it. Well, unless we.
I think that's a useful mindset, but of course, we still have the opportunity when the bids are opened to adjust because the prices are gonna adjust.
Before they award the bids, but I.
Even after they award the bids, we can change order things. I mean, we know that it's not a perfect process, but it's not like our hands are absolutely tied.
Costs money on change order though, too, right?
Sometimes. You're gonna have change orders whether you like them or not.
But if we, but if we see something right now that we, we don't think should be in there, let's just pull it out and say, here, don't put that in, we're gonna deal with this later.
For me, it's Third and Third.
Isn't the funding for Third and Third, like there's no city money in that right now?
Don't look at that up there. That's not useful.
But that's our desire though. Like, I mean.
That was our desire in May.
That was our next meeting.
I don't know, I don't know.
Our next meeting is the 30th.
So your next meeting is in three weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, they're done at that point with the plans. I think if there's something you wanna make a motion about cutting out of the plans, now is your chance. You'll get more chances if you want, but they just get harder and more expensive.
For me, I would motion that we cut out the, um, the landing at Third and Third and leave that to be a grass area at this time.
So is that, that's a motion?
That's my motion.
Is there a second for that motion?
I would second that motion and, you know, I think with, with the understanding that kind of de facto by, if we don't take anything else out we are suggesting to MINDOT that to go ahead with the design as, as they presented it, so.
Well, I mean, at this point, if we don't tell them otherwise in the next couple of weeks, then they will.
They're gonna put it, yeah.
Yeah. So, so third, so, so that's the motion in the second.
Yeah. So if there's anything else, you know, we should.
We should include that?
We should come up with that tonight.
So there would be discussion of that.
So there's a motion in the second, now is the time for discussion. So, um, so here, here's, so I'll play devil's advocate on this because I, I, you know, I've said that I do, I do think that the Third and Third is a, is a valuable space. As far as like the continuity of the, of the pedestrian planning for that, for that space. Um, do we know what the total budget for that Third and Third is? I can't remember exactly what.
I can't either, but do you have it, do you have the last packet handy? While you're looking. Yeah, the budget, cause CJ did put a budget for it.
There was a previous meeting minutes, was that budget that we looked at? I could probably find it.
While you're, while you're looking that up, I'll offer the other devil's advocate point, which is if you leave it in, think about it for three weeks, come back and say, we don't want it. They'll find a way to get it out of the plans. If I write CJ and Brad an email tomorrow that says it's out.
Sixty-four, one thirty.
It's out.
Sixty-four thousand, one thirty-one.
So for that, so for that entire.
Third and Third parking area and open space lump sum sixty-four thousand, one thirty-one.
Okay, there you go. So that.
It's a good amount of money.
It's a good amount of money, sixty-four thousand.
That's their projected, I mean, that's their engineers.
We don't know what it really was.
So, so if we take, if we take a realistic view, and I appreciate that you said this at the last meeting, you know, you can just take, take the numbers that they give us and then add 10% basically to what they're, to what they're saying.
He built, he built some in, but it could be three times that or it could be half that.
Right. So, so if we just assume that we're talking, you know, seventy-five, seventy-five grand or something like that for, for a space like that, um, to have, that's gonna be a part of a, of a, you know, a generational project, a forty-year project. I just wonder what the expense, if we choose to do something like that later on, if that's an expense that we'll be prepared to swallow. You know, if we, if we do it at a later point.
Why can't we have a grass area of park benches if what we want, again, and I don't mean to argue with CJ, but.
Well, is it, is it?
If we wanna provide, if we wanna provide a place to sit, could we not put then, if it were a grass area, a couple of park benches there to the tune of less than a thousand dollars or a thousand dollars versus this?
And the one thing that I, I feel like is the not putting that stub in, continuing Third Street across the intersection. That's the biggest thing I see.
They're just gonna cut that street. They're not putting that in.
Well.
The street that goes in there.
I think he's just saying like the little stub of, of Third Street that comes into, that goes past.
I know it doesn't connect to 61, but they've got it shown coming in.
Yeah, but they're, they're just gonna cut that and put a curb in. They're gonna leave that blacktop there. That's the way he said it.
No, they're not doing anything with that.
Well, leaving that blacktop there.
That sixty-four doesn't pay for any of that.
No. They're leaving the, they're leaving the curb in the blacktop, they're gonna put a curb at the end and then whatever we decide or what we like, maybe you don't like the design that they are putting in. I mean, I don't know, I didn't really look at it that close. I just thought it kinda looked weird, having a street that goes nowhere and you can't go in and park, cause how you gonna get out?
Right.
So, so actually, that's probably roomier than First Avenue West.
Well, I thought it could be designed a little better maybe so a car could actually, maybe you could, well, you could put angle parking.
Yeah.
But how do you, how do you back angle parking out?
On one side, you have to back out, yeah.
So, so let's just say, so for Third, so Third Avenue is going north-south. And if we just stop Third Street at Third Avenue and don't, don't have it go into that parking space, you know, or that, that stub as we're calling it, then that whole space is, is green space.
It's green space.
In there.
Right.
But then we would have.
Save this conversation for later because we've had a lot of conversations with folks that told us they want that street to stay.
Yeah.
For parking.
For parking.
So let's not, let's not create another problem by trying to solve this one and it's not really related to.
They want that little stub.
Yeah, MINDOT doesn't care.
So we're talking about the Third and Third construction that's sixty-four thousand, sixty-four thousand one hundred.
This is a grammarary deal, it's whatever you want. You wanna spend that or not spend that. If you don't wanna spend that, then you get it out and you decide what we wanna do with it later. You know, they're, they're gonna still chop that street off.
Yes.
Yep.
Uh, can, can we have a stipulation that says that I think that we still need to have a light in that, in that area?
I have to look at the grind, it might have been one.
There's one of the T5s is gonna be there, that the L5s is gonna be there.
I'm sure there's a light there somewhere, I would think.
No, they, they, there's not a lot of lights particularly for.
On the walking path, on the path?
They didn't light the path. They didn't wanna light the path at all. They only wanted to light the driving lanes.
And the crosswalks.
So we, we looked at where there were no lights along the path and there's a few spots where we put some in. Yeah, there's definitely somewhere, it's dark too. Uh, that one would probably be pretty dark, but I guess I'm not sure where the closest intersection light would be. Probably all the way back to Third Avenue East.
That's why I think we should leave a light in there.
There's probably gonna be a light somewhere by IGA's driveway, I would think.
Sisters place is probably pretty well.
Sisters, yeah. The bank, I mean.
Third, have to have a light on it. Don't, don't you wanna light the streets and stop something?
There's a street light there currently, isn't there?
L1.
I look at that, I should have looked.
The intersections are lit to Third, yes. So, but past it, I would be surprised. I don't think there's any more lights on that walking path.
I, I, okay. So any further discussion? I, I, I have a concern about the light. I would, I think that it would not be a bad idea to, you know, have a light there, but.
That, you know, that's something we could always, we could add in, I mean, even.
Easier to take it out than add it in. I think if you're concerned about the light, I can direct them to remove all the landing, but leave the conduit for a light there and, and place a light there. And, and I think we could take that out if we decided later we didn't want it, cause this is most likely the end, the dead end.
Dead end right through that light.
And I can check on that pretty easy tomorrow.
Yeah.
That's what I was.
Yeah, I don't have an issue if we had a conduit per light. Safety is safety in that respect to me.
Okay, discussion, more discussion? Any further discussion? We just wanna reiterate what Mike said, like if we send a message that says we want this out, then it's gone. Like, gone, gone.
In the wind. Yes.
Any, any other discussion? All right, hearing none. Um, all in favor of the motion that stands removing the Third and Third landing? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. All right. So, there we go. Um, we're assuming then from what, what, uh, Tim said, that, um, that, you know, barring any other parts or any other change requests that we can make at this point, that we're pretty much saying that the design is, is more or less complete. I'm gonna be going and talking to some people in the next couple of days and if there's, if there's any issues that are correctable that we can, that we can take action on, I'll be sure to get that information to Mike.
Did you send Mike an email or are you going to?
I haven't sent him an email, but I, I, I'm willing to, but I'd like to ask you to help me with that.
Okay.
Or maybe do you wanna talk to those people to figure out?
That's, I, I started the email because I, because I wanted to make sure that I had a template to take notes from what we were talking about. Um, but I'm gonna also add from conversations that I have with other people. So. With that, I think that we should probably move on to council and staff reports. Not to, not to stymie any conversation, but largely to, um, to give us a.
Reasonable bedtime?
Place to jump off from. So.
I walk up at eleven, so I better be done by eleven.
It's like, so everybody, everybody goes for coffee.
I'm glad we have a deadline.
You haven't necessarily through one of J's.
Coffee and Super America if we're done.
Geez, the new guy comes on and gives us a deadline.
If we're here at eleven, I think that there's, we've got bigger problems. Um, so council and staff reports. Craig, you weren't on any, any, um.
I report nothing.
You, you, you reported all the stuff that you talked from people all the time, which is great.
Well, yeah, I spoke to that, but as far as, yeah.
Yep. All right. So, Anton.
Uh, I'm sure there'll be other people that can chime in on this if we wanna talk about it, I guess, but, uh, there's been some snow. Um, and, uh, just making sure that we put out there, uh, making sure that we can get, uh, some sort of conversation happening about parking. And parking. Not even like how the work enforcement.
The county, private department's been working on it and, um, they, they'll probably be at your next meeting with a draft ordinance to look at.
We can not have a city ordinance on parking. I mean, snow removal.
We've got multiple ordinances on snow removal, none of which require uneven parking anymore. That, that one's gone. So, um, I still have some concerns about, um, the mechanics of how it's gonna operate. In particular towing and tickets and things like that.
Yeah.
But, uh, and I maybe won't have any answers before your next meeting. We'll just have to talk about it together with them. But I think their intention is to come here at the end of January. I mean, it's not gonna happen this season, right? The other thing that's going on with, um, snow removal is that, uh, this has been a great kind of, let's think ahead to 2020 and what's this gonna look like on that design? And where's the snow gonna go? And obviously, there's a lot of folks who've been, um, happy to take advantage of the, um, blurry lines and roominess in the existing MINDOT right of way. And, uh, that's not gonna exist anymore when this.
And uh, that's not gonna exist anymore when this project's done. There's only gonna be easily identifiable property lines and not as much room in the right-of-way, and people are gonna have to find other places to put their snow. It's one of those things that um, you know, now is the time for them to be thinking about. So we're gonna put together a little communication just to remind folks that when this project is done, we're not gonna be able to store private parking lot snow in the highway right-of-way anymore. And they're gonna have to start thinking about alternate solutions. And and I don't know what that is, obviously, there's gonna have to be some some new ideas come up with and and if the city is gonna be participating in any of that, I don't know, but hopefully, we'll get some conversations started around that.
Cool.
Well, and I think there's been good um, emergency management did along with, in conjunction maybe with the city or however it went, that I've seen out on Facebook, the video that talks about people moving vehicles and to, you know, be reasonable in some things, so I think that's been a nice step. There has been a lot of discussion on Facebook, so.
Well, and obviously, that, you know, the plow drivers have had their challenges, not just with the depth of snow, but the the type of snow and, you know, and the cold weather. Cold weather that set in right after setting it up for ice.
Water log.
It's crazy, yeah.
I mean, that's one of the things that I had, too, that I wanted to talk about was just the the ordinance and how how long would it actually take us to put an ordinance in place if we get one from the the county? I mean, could we have one in place that would still be functional this year?
It wouldn't hold on to snows.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe April. I don't think before that's very realistic, unless you like what you see in January and you wanna pass a first reading at that meeting.
I mean, I think we're gonna, we're gonna have a serious problem if we have another, you know, one or two more big, big storms, I mean.
Friday, we are supposed to get more snow. I think before they called five to eight inches, it is coming out of the southeast. Mondays was out of the southeast, just so you know.
Supposed to be in the thirties.
Yeah, but the um.
So it was Monday, too.
It's been a lot worse than this, right? So I mean, there's, there are more steps that we'll be taking in terms of snow removal before we're just gonna run out of space for everything.
Well, can we, can we do something that would be like just even advisory to people to, you know, see if we can help the plow, plow drivers out a little bit?
Oh, we've done it, we'll do it more, yeah.
Absolutely, if we can get people to just voluntarily park on one side of the street, you know.
Well, it could be a good way to try it out, I mean.
Well, we've offered to the county.
Especially some of our really thin streets would be.
We've offered to the county and we could, if if we need to do this again, we're happy to provide some legwork on coordinating that type of effort. So if we've gotta go contact a bunch of people and say, Tuesday, we're showing up, we're clearing this side of the street, you can't be here. You know, we can do that sort of thing. So that, we'll, we'll coordinate with the county as more snow removal is necessary. You know, in the past, we've actually took it out of different places, we've piled it up in uh, different lots and neighborhoods. So there's, there's lots more that they can still do, it's just that it's been a while since we've had that kinda dumping.
Well, it's, yeah, that has turned into, you know, rock solid, you know, I mean, I don't think about, but the big graders really can't even move that stuff anymore.
Anton, do you have anything else?
Yep, um, the kind of, I guess, also parking-related, uh, letters went out about people parking RVs and trailers. And I got a call from my neighbor about it and I said, oh, I didn't get one, and then, of course, I did get one, which I don't understand. And he was also wondering, uh, it sounds like there's time, right, for till like spring, that everything is supposed to be addressed, but is there an opportunity that like where there'll be a conversation where those people who maybe received letters can try and. And I know the statute's in there, the ordinance is in there, but um, I'll give you an example, rear of the house, that's what it says, it has to be in the rear of the house. Mine is in the rear of the house, I still got a letter. Um, his house actually doesn't face the street, it faces south, because his house wasn't built in the thirties, so it faced the direction that he wanted it to face. So his is actually behind his house, but it just so happens to be near the street. So, you know, and I'm sure that's, you know, there's two examples and we have two questions. So wondering if there's an opportunity, if you guys receive phone calls, like, hey, I got this letter, what, what are you talking about?
I think one person show up and say, I don't have a trailer, but I don't remember, well, I've talked to him a million times, so um, aside from anybody that is your neighbor, no, I haven't had anybody come and talk to me about it.
It wasn't, it was not my back neighbor, my downhill, yeah. So anyway, just wondering, I told him I'd just let him know if there was gonna be any sort of conversation about it or want the clarification to where he's like, I can move stuff, but I just wanna make sure.
We were um, you know, that was a bulk mailing, right? So we weren't super careful about making sure that we were only sending it to our worst offenders, we were sending it to everybody who we thought could potentially have an issue.
Sure.
So I'm sure that a lot of those people, either their trailer was already gone by the time they got the letter, or it's actually fine and it just needs to be cleared up a little bit. You know, if we're gonna take the next step and talk about enforcement, there'd be lots more opportunities to get really clear about what the rule means and what they can do about it and the time they might need to deal with it.
Okay.
So. Yeah, where you park your trailer in your driveway back behind your house, that the the ordinance says in a rear yard, basically, that means behind the front of the house. So, you know, where it's sticking out further than the front of the house is, then technically, our zoning ordinance is saying that's the front yard.
Right.
And, you know, you've got two front yards on a corner, so.
Lucky me.
Aren't you lucky?
Yeah.
And then uh, we had an EDA meeting last night, um, and. Yeah, that that we got the final numbers for Superior National uh, for the year, they hit their rounds target. Of course, they count rounds that are either nine holes or eighteen holes as a single round, and as the math worked out, there was a lot more nine-hole rounds this year. But they. It it actually was the best year that they've had in some time, which it should be because of all the the effort and money and advertising that got put into it. But uh, considering it really didn't start the grand opening of full twenty-seven wasn't until, I think, sometime in the end of June, if I remember right, early July, end of June.
Later.
So, um, and then October rained twenty-one out of thirty days, so that pretty much eliminated any late-season golfing. The fact that they still were able to hit the rounds, they felt good about that and um, they'll be sitting okay until uh. The first tax payments come in next year, so um, for operating budget. The four of the houses in town of the eight, there was four initials built over off Second Street. Those four have all now sold, uh, which is great, the families are in those. Um, the other four are now on the market, I think the only thing left to do on those is to put garage doors in and a little bit of tidying up. But those are on the market now and uh, hopefully, those sell. Um, the Lutzen project down just to the west of Arrowhead. The those are, they have three of the four initial buildings uh, set. And it sounds like February first, the first building will be ready to rent, February, basically, the first of the next three months, February first, March first, and April first. Those buildings will get checked off and will available for people to rent, um, which is great. And I think the last thing with that meeting was, oh, man, I had the number just was talking about today. The EDA helped facilitate like one point, I think it was, it's a lot, one point three million dollars worth of grants. Just the past year for the county through ITRB and other resources and uh, which is pretty exciting, you know.
How much was that?
One point three million.
I'm sure I say that.
One plus.
But uh, including a couple, one bigger one, uh, which Tim probably knows more about, um, that came through this, in December.
For the, for the ITRB, yeah, completion of the mountain bike trail from Britt Peak to Lutzen Mountains, the last, kind of the last piece of that, it's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So anyway, that's, that's all I know on the year.
Okay, Tim?
Uh, no planning commission, no PUC meeting, so.
Quiet December.
That was January.
That was January.
That was January, yeah.
Oh, my. No Y meeting for December, we'll have finance next week, I, which I'm part of. Golf course task force met yesterday that I'm a part of. Some very good discussions again about how we want to organize things and and what we're thinking about. There are currently six candidates that have applied for the superintendent position. My understanding is that we'll be looking at setting up some interviews sometime here this month. Couple of, it sounds like because we expanded the area that we advertised in, uh, we actually have some people from Wisconsin that are even applied, so I'm, I'm excited to know that that we had more respond. And I think the ad said that it's, it's open until filled, so people can continue to apply. Um, so that was good news. Just a couple reminders from me and what, a couple of things I wanna accomplish. Again, performance evaluation for our administrator position, I hope that we can get to sometime soon. You know, more discussion about what we wanna do with some of our ordinances, things that we wanna take a look at, even if it's the top five, but maybe that'll come with our strategic planning. And I just had a question about, as we talk about snow removal, fire hydrants and where that falls in and how quickly that gets done. Kind of as I looked around, there aren't a whole lot of fire hydrants that are open right now. I understand, it's not my expectation that within twenty-four hours that it has to be done, especially when they're still pushing snow back, but um. What typically do we follow? Does the city typically go clean up all those? Do we?
Yeah, it's not typical, there's no typical, right? I mean, it's just completely depends on what's going on, but we we do and sometimes it's different departments that get involved in that, so, yeah, I'll ask and see where where people are at.
And maybe we need, you know, if we need more help or whatever that we have to do, um, I, I think that's something that I get, we have a a smaller staff. I get when we get huge snowfalls like this together, but again, kinda what course do we wanna move along because I know I wouldn't wanna lose my house because they can't get to the fire hydrant and it's taking them a half an hour and at that point, again.
One of the nice things about our fire department is that a number of our public works-type employees are members of the department, and so they know what's at stake and so that, you know.
Yeah.
They also know that they're the ones that are gonna be shoveling it out.
And I know we asked, you know, I know citizens can go do it, you could take a snow blower around it if it's.
Yeah.
Your yard, if it's your neighborhood, that we can encourage people to do that, but I know ultimately that probably falls to us, I'm guessing.
Most of the time, I think we're the ones that are doing it.
Okay.
And it's not as much of a staffing as it is an equipment issue, you know, we've only got one, the, our bobcat that's with a blower that's really suited for that job. And it's pretty busy for a while when we get a snowfall like this, so.
Right.
You know, it's not something where we'd send somebody else out with just a snow blower and have them chip away at it, try to get three done in a day or something, so. Yeah, they, they'll definitely be getting to it, so, and I'll just, I'll put a bug in people's ear and see where they're at.
That's it. Okay, super. Um, I have only a couple of things, if I can remember correctly. Oh, kind of a funny thing, I got a phone call, or I I placed a phone call with a reporter from the city pages from down in the cities who wanted to do a story on why Cook County is the the best place in the state to retire. Did you hear about that?
I didn't.
We, we won some award, Grand Marais or Cook County won some award for being the best place to retire in Grand Marais. And my response when she, like, when, when she answered the phone, I said, well, if that's the truth, then man, I'd hate to see where every place else is like. I mean, I just, I I try not to be a total, total heavy downer on it, but I was also trying to be pretty realistic about it, just be like, it's hard to live up here. And I don't care if you're retired or if you're, if you're, you know, in your thirties or in your teens, it's hard to live up here. So that was kind of interesting. Um, also, CEC met last week, um, largely just to get some bylaws, stuff taken care of, uh, so that they're able to um, operate better as a, as an entity. And they should be in the next month or two, um, coming forward with those, with drafts of those bylaws for the council to consider, so, that's it.
Do you have anything? To, to Kelly's list of issues, which we're not gonna forget any of, we're absolutely going to be dealing with that when we start talking about our strategic planning.
When is that?
That's what I, that's gonna be my point, um, not January, this, so far, that's the answer we've got. So we're gonna have to widen our search for a day when the five of you are available and uh.
I said we're evenings, but I know that's tougher.
Well, I mean, we can do evenings, but it's probably something where we wanna spend three or four hours of that, so I would actually recommend weekends before evenings.
Well, Craig has.
And I wouldn't recommend.
You can have it after eleven.
Anytime after eleven.
Before eleven.
So, um, I'd, I'd say personally, I don't think that's a problem that we wait until February. There's plenty of things going on right now, it's not like we're just in a holding pattern until this happens. But it means that for all these issues that are not on the list and not being worked on right now, just I appreciate your patience, that we're not gonna forget about them. But we do wanna hear about your priorities before we start jumping in on things, unless, you know, we have to, like these MINDOT projects and other stuff. So we'll be back to you with more scheduling ideas and see if we can get that going.
Okay.
More doodle polls.
Definitely.
Love it.
We're gonna have to bribe you.
After a couple, he nails it down to.
Anything else? Okay, one minute to nine, we are adjourned.
Oh.
Good night, everybody.